The Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:03 PM. Do I have a volunteer for the invocation? Councilmember Patterson, will you do it this day, today, please, invocation? And Mayor Protem Olivia Valentine, the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I'll mix it up, don't worry, I'm not just, it's not just for you today, okay? Thank you so much.
Should I go first?
Please.
Oh, can we all bow our heads? Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for yet another day to do your work. Please bless this council meeting. And I pray that, you know, everything that happens today is in the best interest of the people of Hawthorne. Please continue to keep us safe and, yeah, and continue to take care of the city of Hawthorne. Love you and want to let you know I thank you. Amen.
Please stand. To write high and over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, the roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Reyes English. Councilmember Reyes English. Alright, Mayor Protem Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here, Councilmember Reyes English is here.
Oh, perfect.
Let's check her in.
Alright, perfect.
Thank you. Item number three is a presentation regarding the Building and Safety Department. Mr. Wang, please proceed. Are we ready or should we do, go back to Mr. Wang?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You hear me?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilmember, Mr. Norris and Mr. Kitten. My name is Peter Wang, Director of Building and Safety. Before I start, I would like to express my thanks to the mayor and council giving me the opportunity to make today's presentation. First of all, I would like to, Eric, now, can we start this slide or something? First of all, I would like to share with everyone here our mission. The mission statement for Building and Safety is to protect life and safety of the residents and visitor of the city of Hawthorne and enhance the quality of life, housing, economic prosperity and job creation citywide. Utilize timely, cooperative and transparent process. The department advise, guide and assist customer to achieve compliance with building, zoning, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, disable access, energy and green code. Plan local and state law to building safe, well and fast. Secondly, I would like to briefly describe our service. Building and Safety provide building permit, review monitoring of the design, construction, installation, demolition and maintenance of privately owned building and structures through the enforcement of the city building code and regulation. To simply itemize as follow. One, building permit application and permit issuance. Two, permit record keeping. Three, construction document review, plan, calculation and report. Fourth, review and enforce state and county agency regulation. And fifth, construction inspection. Finally, we perform enforcement on unpermitted or unsafe building and structure. Next, please. So third, I would like to clarify our boundary of our jurisdiction. Building and Safety only enforce the building law and regulation on privately owned properties. Property owned by municipality is also under Building and Safety's jurisdiction. Public right of way is under Public Work Department's jurisdiction. Next slide. Now, let's talk about why we need a Building and Safety. There's only one word, it's called disaster. In the left-hand side, I show you the 1933 Long Beach earthquake picture. And that's where the building codes start. And in the right-hand side, I show you 2021 surfside building collapse in state of Florida that caused 97 people die. In the left-hand side, actually, it's called, the disaster was caused by the mother nature. In the right-hand side, actually, this disaster was caused by human error, which, you know, the lacking of maintenance and ignore the warning sign and caused the people's life. Next slide, please. Simply, I like to set what are we enforcing? And there is a four major part that we are enforcing. One is code and standard and third one, regulation and force is rule. So I will explain to you what is this four major part in the next one. And the Building Department is established pursuant to the mandate of California Health and Safety Code to facilitate the city's development in the fashion, in a fashion, offer reasonable protection to life and properties. This objective is achieved through implementation of the mandatory Minima Building Standard in the permit and inspection process. So further note to clarify is Building and Safety is essentially a co-enforcement agency and fulfill its purpose through permitting, plan checking and inspection services. Next slide. The first things we talk about code. In the picture, you can see the series code, which including building, existing and historical, residential code, energy code, mechanical code, plumbing code, electrical code, green building code and fire code. And in within this code, there's also standard involved, which is first one is wind and seismic design standard. And second picture show you the ACI 318-14 concrete standard. And the third one is a wood about national design standard for the wood. The fourth one on the steel is based on the American Institute of Steel Construction. They're know the menu. And the last one is the machinery is ACI 530-1. So all these standards is also part of enforcement. And next slide. And regulation, what is the regulation? The regulation we are enforcing also including state, which you know, the regulation issued by the state architect, in the regulation issued by the fire marshal, regulation issued by the fishing and game and license contracts board. We also have to know observe the regulation from the county health and county fire and county industrial waste or sanitation district. And finally, county water quality board. In the local rule is we have to know the also watch for the city municipal code, city business license requirement and school district know rule, building and safety submitting requirement, building and safety Minima documentation requirement. And state also has licensed design professional and licensed contractor rule. And finally, is we also have watch the rule from issue from the financial department for the older accounting procedure and payment and refund. That's all the note, you can see the building and safety involved with code, standard, regulation and rule. Next slide, please. I mentioned about Building and Safety essentially is a law enforcement agency. And building code violation is subject to prosecuted as misdemeanor criminal defense. And now what I, I would like to talk about what kind of enforcement is Building and Safety. Unlike the police department, we are pay enforcement. Public pay the fee for Building and Safety to ensure their design and their construction contractor for their building structure meet the Minima standard. Please know the watch, the word is the Minima standard. There is no maximum standard, we don't care about your comfortability, but we do care about Minima standard. The fee by paid by the public is to recover the city expense. We don't seeking for profit. Building and Safety act as a third-party professional, protect private citizens welfare by ensure private professional fulfill their fiduciary duties. And then the second one is we are passive enforcement. Means you don't come to us, we don't go out for job, we don't go out looking for job. So permit is required for any individual plan to build or erect any building or structural on his or her property. Building and Safety is well enforce the requirement code on the regulation on such proposed work. Building and Safety also make investigation upon request made by the residents. And the third part is where our enforcement is objective. We don't take subjective note the enforcement. The building is the only object for code and code compliance. In other words, we don't care who owns it, we don't care who is going to use it. As long code require, it has to comply on that building only. And then plan format and must meet the drafting and legal standard. And the third one, the construction installation detail must comply with the industrial standard and must pass inspection before conceal. Next slide. Throughout the year, I like to show you a very, very simple picture. In the left-hand side, you see, only see one book, which is 1980, there's only one building code. We don't have any others, right now, we have over 10 volume of the code. So it changed from very simple note requirement become very complicity requirement right now. Just like you know, the whatever, the lower bottom picture, you see a simple note dial tone, dial note the phone, and right now, we have the smartphone, which you require you to learn certain knowledge to operate it. There is no note before, you don't have, you don't have a text message, you don't have Instagram, you don't have Twitter, but everything right now, you can see that the very complex in the smartphone. Next one. What happened because of the changes? In the public side, the changes from the simple to complicity cause the homeowner is no longer able to design the construction by their own. So in other words, design professional and construction profession are needed to building a project. And public is required to possess a minimum knowledge to deal with Building and Safety, just like operating note a smartphone. In other word, you want to operate the smartphone, you better have know the certain knowledge, otherwise you just can't. And also, these changes cause a longer time would be needed to know circle through all the agency and the approval. On the government side, the challenging note we are facing is higher qualification for technical technician, inspector and engineer through a certification and the license process. And we need a more training and we need a more resources needed in term of equipment and personnel such as iPad and iPhone, all this new equipment to keep mobility and instant instantaneous. And our, we need a better computer system and additional IT people personnel is also needed to support the, to reply the email, phone and internet note inquiry. Next slide, please. So all this happened, the changes facing the challenging note to the complicity of the code and standard and there's so many agency involved, is longer wait time for plan review. A longer onsite inspection time because we need to know to enforce so many different agencies rule. The third, require additional resources, training and supply. And fourth is more incomplete plan and report at the initial submitter because they don't know what do we need and so they just trying to submit whatever they have. And that costs more trouble for the initial submitter. And also, the fifth is frequent incorrect construction work occurred. And sixth, and city backlog does not match with the private business timetable because our resources are limited. And seventh, lacking of professional knowledge from the public side cause more correction and wait time. And because they don't have a knowledge, so recreating more mistake and then create a more back and forth correction and actually really wasting our resources. And eighth actually is most troublesome issue that happen is abuse public resources for personal gain. What this means, means people don't want to learn the knowledge or they don't want to hire professional. And they using customer service as a excuse and said, we should teach them. But actually, it just like, they never tell the Apple to teach them how to, now force them to teach them how to use the iPhone. Yeah, maybe you know that there's a lot of way, but they don't obligated. For us, with the limit of funding and we don't have, we don't have the time or resources to educate people, we're enforcement agency, we're not educational agency. And but this knows the cost knows the big confusing between customer service and enforcement. And next slide, please.
Mr. Wang, you have two more minutes.
Okay. And our customer service, you can see left-hand side is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject, since it's one of our own internal reports. I think we agree that we can, he can cover a couple more minutes, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Just because he's internal, if it's an external person that's coming, that's when we gotta do the 10 minute.
Alright, thanks.
Under the left-hand side and the right-hand side, you can see the two different facility because there know the resource and funding. One is know the limited service, one is a full service. And this one actually give you a very, very simple no comparison about what kind of customer service because the resources or funding provide and risk current you have a people open the door for you. And motel six know you know, need to move everything yourself. So I just give you a little thing, very simple note the fact and to tell you what kind of customer service or all the customer service based on your funding and review resources. And next slide, please.
Mr. Wang, let's not forget that they leave the lights on for you.
Excuse me?
The hotel, they leave the light on for you.
Ah, okay. Service team members' current resources. And every month right now, we are issue about 143 permit. A number of plans submitted is 82 plan. A number of inspection requests is 320. And current staff right now in the administration, we have a one director. And plan check, which we budgeted with one part-time associate, oh, currently, we only have a one part-time associate plan check, which we budgeted for three people, which you need a senior plan checker and associate engineer. So we're 70% currently on the staff. Inspection, currently, we only have one building inspector and one part-time inspector, which is a 50% staffing. And we need a one senior inspector, which is have more experience and more knowledge. At the public counter, we only have a one part-time clerk. And we need a two full-time permit technician plus this one part-time clerk. Actually, we are kind of 80% on the staff based on our budget. Next slide, please. I try to let the council know and the old residents know, although we are in such know the tight resource and tight budget and tight personnel, we still know providing know the, our know the, we still be able to manage our complaint level down to know the very minimum than before. At our counter, right now, we simplify the permit application, making know people easy to figure out. And secondly, we establish a permit plan checking renewal policy. So applicant know can easily renew their know the previous expired permit and the expired know the plan for them to continue their work. The third one is we establish a refund policy. When there is something happen, when people really know the out of their budget cannot continue work, they be able to get the money back. And fourthly, we establish a computer logging system for plan tracking. We can easily within know the, know the three minutes, we can find out where is your plan are, how's your plan status. The fifth is we establish a voicemail to email to ensure all the phone call we can return. And sixth is we post all the inspection schedule online. People can make know the online one click and see when is the inspection window. On plan check, we're building a standard plan review sheet to know the, to ensure Minima compliance standard. And second, we establish our online submitter or resubmitter procedure for using Gmail platform with only $1.99 per month cost to the city. And the third one is we create overtime policy, I'm sorry, no, this must be typo. We call overtime policy, so when there's an emergency plan, so our plan check can use the weekend to continue to provide the timely service. And inspection, we reduce the inspection window, when, when the wait time from normally whole day to two hour window. This know the policy know that have been started and success, successfully implemented for about two year. And second, we establish overtime procedure to accommodate time demand private know development during the off-hour need. You can see know the, that big know development in the Crenshaw apartment. We have to accommodate their time schedule by allowing, by paying our inspector in the Saturday and Sunday and to continue their work in order to meet their, you know, schedule and their financial, their bank restriction. And finally, establish online support system for fuel inspector for mechanical plumbing and electrical to quick solution in the field. Many of time is inspector couldn't make, you know, the, couldn't make a decision because complicated specialty issue, mechanical, plumbing and electrical is specialty. We have know the successfully issue this, know the online on-call system. So inspector, we're not wasting residents' time for them to come back for a simple question. This conclude my presentation. I hope know the, I explained our current status and hope know the, we can continue improve. I would like to thank you council support, I would like to thank you mayor, council member, city manager, city attorneys, the support and let us know was able to do our job successfully. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question and then it's gonna be either councilmember Montero or councilmember Reyes English. And then after those two individuals, it'll be Mayor Protem. So I appreciate Peter for you putting this up. Can you go to the previous screen, previous screen, the last screen?
Eric?
Eric, the last screen, please, yes. So, yeah, that last screen, please. Yes, that one, can you? Okay, Peter, specific question, the public counter and these improvements, are they in progress or have they been completed?
They actually been completed, it been know the implemented about one year already.
Alright, so the plan check, so the plan check renewal policy, that applies to people who have a plan out there that's being, that's being reviewed and they've left it in, they've left it in limbo because they've just left the project alone and they haven't come to, to complete it, to complete the progress with you. Is that what we're talking about or is there something else that I'm missing?
The plan renewal policy is because some of the people was approved in 2019. And due to the pandemic, there's nobody be able to start their work. So based on the policy, it's supposed to expire, but I didn't want them to pay the full amount because doesn't make sense, so we allowed them pay only 25% renewal. So we allowed them pay only twenty-five percent renewal fee, so allow this plan continue effect.
Okay, yeah, because we ran into that recently, uh my council member colleagues kind of remember what that was. Um yeah, one thing that I wanted to comment, I really appreciate you bringing this um before us. One of the thing is that we get the calls, oh, the planning, the building inspection and. They're like not, they're delaying this thing and it's taking forever and all. I mean, sure, we might have uh the the big challenge there is that these people, uh the. The applicants are not hiring people who are capable, they get contractors off like, you know, I don't know where the heck they get them. Uh but they don't have the capability to be able to draw plans, it's almost like they're turning in something on a napkin to you. And they want you to to uh to review it and uh grant the permits and stuff, so. Uh one of the things is is that if anybody's going to apply, they gotta have some professional plans because we're not just. We're not a third world country, we don't just builds, we're not gonna allow people to build just junk in the city and it has to be. Good, professional, well-engineered type of work, so um I really appreciate you showing these improvements. And I also appreciate you highlighting the challenges um from the applicant towards the city because that's a big uh. That the delays are, you know, are not what are represented to us by those people who end up complaining, okay? Um after we get two sides of the story, we figure out, you know what, there's a problem. And when there is an issue here on our end, um I do recognize that your department is quick to correct that, Peter, so. Uh thank you so much for that, kudos to you, okay?
Thank you.
Council member Alex Montero, and then we'll go to councilwoman English, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, um. Thank you, Mister Peter Yang, uh for giving us this uh presentation, uh it was a well thought and very well explained. So ju- not just for us, but also for the for our residents, so thank you for that. Uh my question to you, so you said the the this plan, you know, is a good plan, uh so is in progress. Uh it was been established since a year ago, that's what I understanding?
Uh which part you talking about?
The ones that the the there was just on the on the screen, all these um.
The improvement actually.
Improvement, our improvements, yeah.
Actually, all the improvement has been done and then already implemented. And we are trying to continue refine it, make sure know that it will be become a. A constant, I mean, will not just happen when I'm here. It's trying to know establish, I know the department policy with or without Peter Wang. And house on building must behave consistently, that's what I'm I'm going after. I want to know the building department to be consistent.
So the other, the other thing that I wanna ask you, uh uh Mister Yang, is is about. You know, when when some, like you, like you said, that we, we are not here to educate the people how to do their own. Uh engineering or their own architect design, but when they come, right? There is, I don't know if there is a uh specific guidelines. That it tells them, okay, this is the first phase, right, that you need to go through this, this, this and that. And this is going to take, like you would have to have like the guidelines with a timetable. That will tell them, okay, this first phase is gonna take four weeks, the next phase might be taking four to six weeks. Until you know, until the end of the process, so they have an understanding that when they come in. They have these clear guidelines, what we expect from them. A timetable, how things is going to progress inside your department, because like you said, it's not just you. Sometimes you have to go to the planning, sometimes I have to go to the public works, sometimes I have to go outside to fire marshal. So all these things, I would like to see like a clear guideline. Established with timetables to show the our customers. That come to the building and safety, this is what we going to expect from you and this is what you going to expect from us, right? So to give them clear expectation and not to leave them to say, or they 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 fell out the permit or delivered the plans. And then they go back and then they say, oh, I've been waiting for two months, or I've been waiting for three, three months. So we should give them a timetable. That is understandable with clear guidelines, what expectation from them and what we. When we make the the correction and you say, okay, now, you know, you're going to take this plan back, but. If you come back, it's gonna take another two, three weeks to finish it. So they will have a clear understanding how long the process is going to take.
Yes, now the, I'm working with the city manager, uh Mister Val Norris. And to change the routing or the procedure to make things know more simple. And but currently because our know the uh uh planning director is uh interim, so he's kind of, we're still working on it. So secondly, we're trying to establish the uh uh handout, uh 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 information sheet. And also standard correction sheet, agency referral sheet to give the people at the first time submitter. But because we don't have enough people right now, so we only finished know remodel, kitchen remodel information sheet right now. Hopefully, with the more resources now, by the time we have enough people, we can establish more educational. Uh 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 material to help us know the to avoid any confusion. And also educate, you know, the um educated uh uh um um. The residents about this complicity procedure and the rule regulation and call and standard. Where, where, where uh uh in the row, in row to do that.
Okay, that's good, that's good, because that's why we say we have to be clear, because a lot of people got confused, right?
Yes.
So the other thing that I understanding, a- and you said that you about seventy percent short staff in your department?
Right now for plan checking.
Of plan checking, so so definitely, so it's something that we have to address, right? Uh because we want the 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 departments around to be efficient and effective. So uh we definitely have to do some recruitment uh for your, for your department because uh. Building and safety, like you said, it's very important, it's about health and safety of the people. It's not the health and safety of the city council, it's for the whole residents. And the people that live in those buildings and business, so definitely, we need to give you the resources that you need so you can. Uh you know, deliver outstanding outcomes, okay, so I'm I'm gonna work on that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Um I appreciate that you mentioned uh right now council member Montero about the the sequence and uh. Actually, um I I am aware that uh Mister Peter Wang is working on a flow chart. A flow chart that, you know, indicates things, the flow chart, you know, little bubbles with the arrows. I mean, we can have sequence steps of one, two, three, four, but a nice flow chart would be good, and then. A big development like a hotel is not the same thing as a remodel. So a flow chart that is appropriate for the level of complexity of the different developments, major developments. Uh something like a refurbishment of a home, uh an addition to breaking down a wall or whatever the heck, you know? Or so, I mean, I think you did mention that to me, uh Mister Wang.
We're working on it.
We're excited to see that and that's exactly, it's actually good that you're hearing it from my council member colleagues that they're interested in that also.
Thank you.
Council member English?
Uh yes, thank you, um. I I I wanted to address somewhat similar what council member uh Montero just um. Mentioned and that has to do with your workforce and being fully staffed. So there is a a mo- a more um better streamlined and more um. Professional, you know, professionalism in it as well. And what I mean by that is having, you know, a a turnaround time in which. Your office is communicating effectively with those that have applied and possibly not fully submitted all their paperwork, so. Being able to respond quickly to emails is important, including responding to phones uh ringing in your offices. Um and I hope that's s- some other things that you're addressing too. And I know you mentioned earlier that um uh having to do, alluding to, you know, not being. Uh having to um, you know. Show a sense of 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 compassion towards those that are reaching out to your department wanting to know what's the status of their application, but obviously. You know, good customer service and and discretion is is something that I know you you could always uh leverage. So having said that, um I still, I still want our city manager. To assure that we're fully staffed and recruitment needs to happen, absolutely. And we need to meet those um percentages of of uh uh that you have currently that you're missing. Um we have to be fully staffed at a hundred percent, you know, thirty percent, twenty percent, fifty percent, it's not gonna cut it. And you're absolutely right when it comes to um, you know, two sides to a story. We often as city council members and mayor get complaints from those that are trying to get work done. Just as much as we're trying to get work out, right?
Yes.
It's important that um there's due diligence and to be able to do that, I think you definitely need a, you know, a person, point of contact to answer that call. Do follow-up technical, not so technical but clerical and just being responsive. Because at the end of the day, um um we're not trying to intervene in what you're responsible for. However, that's sometimes what happens and it's just simply to say basically, please follow up with their case. Let them know where they're at with regards to their application, right? And then that goes the same with um, you know, final inspections and, you know, um certificates of occupancy, these are all important. Um you know, to assure that we're doing not just good uh buildings and providing a good product, but um. Being secure that we did our all of our work, good work to not have any fatal issues, such as those photos that you showed us earlier. So that's very important and um I commend you on your efforts to try to implement that through the last year, that's that's good. And um I can't express enough that we need to keep pushing even further. So if you could please continue that in those efforts and then with city manager and yourself. Working to um to make sure we get the the recruitment that we need and we get the bodies that are obviously. Uh certified, trained to the fullest as you outlined, those that you're missing in in the types of skills that are needed, okay? But uh thank you very much for your uh presentation and I really like your house, it's beautiful back there. But thank you, I re- I I appreciate that, thank you, Mister Wang.
Mayor Pro Tem Olivia Valentine and then council member Patterson.
Thank you, mayor, uh thank you, Peter, for that presentation. Um I found it very um very illuminating in terms of. Try uh getting to know what you actually do in the building and safety department and the resources you need. Do you mind going back to one of the slides you had where you showed the, you showed the uh severe lack of resources that you have? I'd like to go back to that. Not that one.
Uh I s- I think the sec- last second one.
I don't think that's the one, that's that's uh.
No, the go, go, um Eric, Eric, no, the 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 last, the the second to the last one. Yeah, this one.
Okay, so you, which one of this of of this, oh, okay, so. How are you managing with the lack of staff that you have, that's my first question?
Actually, at this time, know the way kind of cross know the uh uh cross, know using the people for inspector. Know while the know the part-time inspector need to come back and to handle the permit technician know the when you're doing the lunchtime. And at this time, and thank you, give me the opportunity to express my fully thanks. To Alan Liang, Agbar Faruki, to allow me borrow their resources. To cover up our counter hour. And without them, actually, I don't believe, without both of them, I don't believe I can survive. In last two and a half years. And they are my physical and spiritual support for my entire operation. I have to say thank you know for especially Agbar and Alan. And no doubt, you know, the they, 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 they are the know the back, back no support, know the background support for building and safety. They they allow me using their person, know the uh borrow their person when the emergency time happen.
So which um the current staff in that you're lacking. Where uh where, where is the crisis most severe, wh- what staff do you need right now in order to do your job? What do you need to do?
I need to know the in the know plan checking and public counter right now. And uh our city manager is now helping me working with our uh interim HR director. To get these things fulfilled.
Okay, so you are recruiting currently for plan checker and public counter person?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so one of the things that was that was raised earlier was the fact that. It was necessary to respond back when someone has a question and they send you an email and you're saying that. Um you don't have the staff, but you are responding to email inquiries, is that right?
Yes.
How are, how are you, how are you doing that since you don't have the staff?
We work overtime, we know that I work on Saturday, Sunday, know just know trying to answer the email. And our, our, know the older counter people, they, they are, uh they trying to issue whatever. They they trying to do the old the inside maintenance know during the know the uh uh Saturday and Sunday. And that's the only thing we can do, know the because uh we don't have enough, know the, for example, like. If the counter people know the facing, uh there's a counter African customer at a counter, they cannot answer the phone. So at that time, I I I bought, right now, I borrowed it uh 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 from people from public work to help me to answer the phone. And we cross know the, we 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 using the know the inspector and the counter. Together and while the inspector also helping plan checking to checking all the solar panel plant. So we just know the, like, I checked the plan too, I mean, we we just use everybody hundred percent. Actually, hundred twenty percent, whatever you can do, know the we 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 just get the job done.
So what can we do as a council to help you get the staff that you need, what do you need right now?
Actually, you know, the council already helped me a lot by, you know, passing the last, know the uh last year budget already. So right now is uh our HR is also, they don't have enough people to help, help me uh to to do all the interview stuff. So HR is doing their best to, I understand, I'm not complaining, but HR is already, Irma is doing her best. To trying to staff notice, to do the staffing for me. And Mister Norris know the definitely know trying to do know his best. To uh 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 brain or know different places, know the to support me the uh my operation.
So so I'm, I guess I need to get back to the first question I, or or the second question I wanted, that is, what? What, where is your, your issue the severest, what, what do you need to, who do you need to hire next?
Right now, we already po- we already ready to post for the plan checking staff at this time. And uh um the public counter is also know we need to, these two item is. Is two uh major item we need to have.
So plan checking and public counter, and you saying that the 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 interim city manager is already working with you to do this?
Yes, we've been working on this one since know the um a month ago.
Alright, so you have, you have my full support for going ahead and trying to hire someone on in both those areas. And whoever else you need in order to get your job done, it's it's. It's unfortunate that you have to borrow from other departments in order to get your job done, we have to fix that. So thank you, we, thank you for explaining all of that. I appreciate it, thank you.
Um council member Patterson, but council member English, do you have just your hand up, because you have additional question? Alright, council member Patterson, uh just try to put your hands down when you guys uh ah finish, alright.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, how you doing, Mister Wang, um I appreciated your presentation, now you're very, very clear. And really appreciate you pointing out the the staffing need that you have. Um, you know, when I hear about kind of things that you're in charge of, one of the things I think about in our city is our goal of being business friendly. And I would imagine maybe some other departments that come into play as well. And so this comes to you and also the city manager, I would, I I just did a a quick search online about business-friendly cities and. There there seems to be an organization, uh Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation. That gives awards to cities that are the most business friendly, I would love for us to to strive to win such a recognition. And so I would, I would like to ask you guys to kind of set that as a goal for our city and your departments. And whatever departments that kind of come into uh achieving such recognition. Uh and look at some of these cities, these, these most recent recipients and uh seeing, you know, wh- what their staffing level is looking like, uh what kind of strategies they might be employing and how we can duplicate uh what they've done, their efforts to have some of the same success. Uh and one other thing just want to bring up, i- it seems very apparent through these uh past few comments from our, my council colleagues that a, a, a huge bottleneck that we're experiencing right now is in our HR department. I know it's a little off subject, but I, I think we need to make this a priority to actually have staff in our HR department. I think we have no full-time staff in HR right now. And so it's really impossible for us to uh attract the people that we need to move our city forward if we don't have anybody in that office uh on a full-time basis to do that work. So uh Mr. City Manager, let's definitely make that a priority.
Thank you, Mr. Wang. We appreciate your uh putting this together. It was very important. Um and it's good that you spoke up and told us, you know, what's going on, just correct some of the myths that are out there and uh telling us, you know, that you come, what you've done and just telling us, you know, the, ours, the city side of the story. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
All right. We have two additional, uh we have two additional items for um pre- on presentations. We like to limit those to ten minutes. Um the reason why we went a little bit over on this last one was because it's of a of a grand nature, a grand inch nature and impact to our city. And it was actually uh, it was bound to have had a lot of questions and answers that were gonna be given because it's like a core function of the city. It's not just a ancillary, ancillary uh presentation. It's a core presentation. So that's why we went through that. So uh Mr. Interim City Attorney, can you have the floor? Can you give us like a, a good, quick uh presentation on this? However, you can.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you, uh city council members. Uh this is a follow-up and this will be very brief. Uh it's a follow-up from our previous council meetings in which I promised to come back with more comparisons of uh various parking fines that we have in the city in, in comparison to other neighboring cities, so um I don't know if you can see that? Okay, so um
Do you have the ability of uh, well, I guess, can you, can you change the width on the columns for the city so we can see the city names?
Yes, I, I can't see what you're seeing, but
Well, I think we can navigate with what's on there, man.
Is, is that better?
No, what I meant was the width, the width of the actual columns because you can't see the headers comfortably to see the names.
Yeah, it, it's, it's the Excel program. I, I kind of played around with it. This is the best I can do. I can explain it.
Okay, go ahead. Just go ahead. Yes.
Okay, so on the top column is uh first, it's, it, it describes what's in there. First category is it was, of course, City of Hawthorne. It's in blue. Uh the next under letter C is Culver City. D is Torrance, then Inglewood, Gardena, El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redonda Beach, Long Beach, and Santa Monica. The next category in blue and under letter M is the high, that's the highest fine rate for this particular violation. So the first is seventy dollars, that's the highest, and that would go to Long Beach. Um the lowest was thirty-eight dollars and that's Hermosa Beach. And the average was fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents. The median is what's in the middle between all these cities. So the first violation would be violation for parking and when there's a street sweeping. Um currently, the City of Hawthorne, and first of all, I, I want to thank uh Madeline I- Abraham from the Traffic Bureau of the Hawthorne Police Department who contacted her colleagues in different cities and was able to gather these parking schedules for these different cities. For, so for the first category, as an example, could be for violation of parking during s- street sweeping. Currently Hawthorne uh is fined for that is forty-eight dollars. The highest would be Long Beach with seventy dollars and the lowest would be Hermosa Beach with thirty-eight dollars. Um if you, the reason why I put median on there is that if you look at City of Long Beach, they've have a fairly higher rate than most of the other cities. Whereas Hermosa Beach is very low compared to other cities. So the median is something that's not just an average uh but is in the middle between all the cities. Um and what I, instead of going through each category, so the left would be the violation of traffic control, violation of time limit in parking. Then number five would be red curb parking, red curb, yellow curb and whatnot as it go down the line. Um what I have put in green, if you see typing green, that's where Hawthorne is higher in terms of the fine amount compared to the average or the median. So the average for, for instance, red curb parking, city, the currently Hawthorne is fined is seventy dollars. And the average is fifty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. The median is fifty-three dollars. Now the highest is actually City of Inglewood with fine of seventy-eight dollars for parking in red curb. So we're not the highest, but we are higher than the average. Um if you go further down to number ten, that's commercial vehicle parking in a residential area. Um in that category, City of Hawthorne is the highest and that fine is hundred dollars. Um whereas the average is sixty-six dollars and the median is sixty-six dollars. So the green is categories where Hawthorne is higher than the average or the median. Now what I highlighted in yellow is where Hawthorne's fine is significantly lower than the average or the median for other cities. So parking over seventy-two hours, for instance, Hawthorne's fine for that is forty-eight dollars. Whereas the average is fifty-six dollars and eighty cents and the median is fifty-three dollars. Um parking in a fire lane, currently Hawthorne uh fine is forty-eight dollars. Whereas the median uh fine for, for that is sixty-eight dollars and average is eighty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. So we go down uh handicap parking, we're s- uh pretty close, but still lower than the average and the median. Of three hundred forty-two is the median, average is three hundred forty-five dollars. And handicap parking uh fine for City of Hawthorne is three hundred thirty dollars. Parking in a fire hu- close to fire hydrant is forty-eight dollars in, as a fine in Hawthorne. Whereas average is fifty dollars and median is fifty-three dollars. Um same thing with parking in the wrong side of the street. It's forty-eight dollars for Hawthorne, whereas the average is fifty-two, median is fifty-three. Um there were couple of um uh specific parking violations that members of the city council was concerned with. And that was permit parking violation. Um the city is fined for that is forty-eight dollars, but the average is forty-nine. And the median is forty-seven, so the current rate of forty-eight is kind of in line with the average and the median for the other cities. Um there was also, Mr. Mayor could had a concern about the T parking. And we don't have specifically a, a violation of, of parking over the T mark, but there is a fine for parking um not within the stall. So that we basically is a fine of forty-eight dollars. And if you see our um our fine rate is forty-eight dollars are pretty predominant for various parking violations.
Robert, what's the upper bounds on that?
So, so the highest for parking uh outside the stall mark is sixty-five dollars. And that would be, I, that's City of Long Beach. And the lowest is um thirty-seven dollars. And I believe that's Gardena.
Can we, what's, can we raise it higher than that? I mean, what's, what gives us our limit?
So basically, the vehicle code states that a city's parking schedule should be in line with the rest of the cities in the county. Um so the average for parking outside the stall is around forty-eight dollars. That's the median and that's, we're right in there along with the median and the average. Now that, that doesn't mean that we have to stay that at that mark. It could mean that we could increase it slightly, but if you see the highest at sixty-five and we're at forty-eight, we can't raise it too significantly. It would be, it would be going outside the line. So if we, we could stay at forty-eight, um if council wanted to direct the staff to increase that fine schedule for stall, parking within the stall to uh be similarly in line with, let's say, Manhattan Beach, which is at fifty-three dollars. Um that is a, that is a higher fine. And we wouldn't be going to outside of the uh re- rest of the cities in the county. So what I wanted to do was, I just want to present this and, and give city council an idea of where we would want to increase some of these fine areas. Um it's not necessarily, because when we amend the bail schedule by resolution is, it, you know, we have to do the whole, all the violations, list all the violations. So this is an opportunity where if you have specific concern, for instance, I, I believe there was a time several years back where a big focus of the council meeting was commercial vehicles parking in residential area. And that's, I, is the reason why I believe we have a very high fine for that. Um we're the highest in terms of, of having a fine and the amount of one hundred dollars, whereas the average is around sixty-six. So if you have a specific concern for the city that needs to be addressed, I think it is okay to be the highest. But as long as it's not extremely out of line with the rest of the cities. So there's no set specific number formula. But if you have specific concern that's particular to our city, then I think it is okay to have a higher fine, but um there's no set limit. Basically, we're just going with the wording of the statute, which is that it had, it should be in line with the other cities in the county. And I have one of the questions.
Council member English?
Um yes, thank you, Ra- uh excuse me, I was just about to say call you Ross. Thank you, Robert. Um thank you for the information. Um the reason, you know, we're here this evening discussing the fee schedule is, you know, based off of my observation and some other concerns from other members. But uh the other question that I want to pose is how long has it been since the city has done a, a a study like you're doing this evening? When, and also, when was the last time we even implemented uh an increase to our fee schedule? Do you know?
I, I, I did check and my recollection is that I think we did this in twenty seventeen. Um and, and, and you know, I may not be correct, but my recollection was that it was twenty seventeen that we did a, a fees, parking fee schedule for this. So that's the reason why I, you know, some of the cities that have not amended their uh parking bail schedule for a long time, I think their rate's gonna be significantly lower. Um and it just may be that other cities have higher concern about the parking situation, but I, my belief is that just, just my recollection is that it was around twenty seventeen that we did a resolution to amend the parking bail schedule.
Okay, so um I know that we needed to do a, a broader evaluation, which included uh other neighboring cities, which we're doing here this evening. But my main focus was like, for instance, the permitted parking, preferential parking areas, communities that have permitted parking. And the other one obviously was the um uh, you know, street sweeping. Um and because of some of those that um, you know, we, we asked for increases, we had to do a, you know, a full study, which is, is good. Um but I think permi- when, when, when we have permitted uh uses and requests from communities to be a uh preferential parking district with permits, I think those need to be looked at differently, similar to, you know, um say, for instance, eh, all of these have a rule, right? Have a rule which with, you know, with regards to commercial over seventy-two hours, fire lane, handicap hydrant. But uh I think like permit needs to, we need to pay attention to that a little bit more because I know and I've heard that there's um still folks parking in permitted areas that should have a permit. And it doesn't bother them that, you know, forty-eight bucks, right? It's like, whatever. Um my thought was if we do some of these increases and across the board, if we have to, that, you know, we take away from some of these bad actors that just feel that, you know, they can park wherever they want and not respect the fact that you need a permit to park in those areas. Or, you know, any other rule that applies to street signage. My whole thing is follow the street signage, read what it says and obey the rules, right?
And um and, and well noted, Councilman English. I, I could come back with a resolution with an amended uh fee schedule that would emphasize certain uh violations that city council members have concerns with, including the permit parking. So um for instance, in permit parking, the highest rate that out of this comparison was sixty dollars for Long Beach. Um I don't think it would be too out of line to increase our parking fine for permit parking violation to say about sixty-three or sixty-five. So we would be the highest, but I don't think that's really out of line with the, with the rest of the cities. So I can come back with a resolution with a suggestion with a amended parking fine schedule. And if city council can make comments on it and make some uh additional changes if, if you choose to do so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Are you guys good? Okay, council member Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you, uh Mr. Robert King for the, for the study and for the giving us this uh presentation about this, this, the scheduled fee. Um my opinion is uh you know, there is bad actors right there that, you know, defying the laws and park on the, on the permitted only areas. But believe it or not, I've been getting a lot of complaints that people do not find parking. And sometimes, you know, those permitted areas, it's empty and that is where they go and park there, okay? So because a lot of people are not in favor of the uh permitted parking, believe it or not. And even uh, you know, they're waiting, some of them are waiting for us to open City Hall. And for us to be at the diocese, they're gonna come to complain about that. So I would think that at this time, I would not support no increase of none of these fines until we have a clear understanding how we're going to solve the parking issue in Hawthorne. Because there is parking issue in, in a lot of these neighborhoods that have a lot of bargain buildings. Uh special, you know, east of uh, we can say from east of Hawthorne Boulevard all the way up to, to Crenshaw. Uh but to me, because we're still on the pandemic, we still have a lot of people that have a financial burden and, 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 you know, fighting to put food on the table. I would say at this time, I would not bring uh this to, to a vote, uh maybe next year. When we have a clear understanding how we're going to figure it out um the parking in, in all the areas of Hawthorne that is in trouble about parking. And even like the T parking, for example, right? Because we're just starting to paint those uh curves as a T. Uh I believe, you know, for, you know, just tried for the first year for forty-eight dollar if they park there illegal. But or, or don't, or don't park right. And then maybe next year evaluate and see, okay, maybe there is time for us to increase these other fines that is probably problematic. But I don't think this time we should just go ahead and do uh increase fine because there is a lot of people that is not happy with those permitted parking areas. Uh and even remember, we put a moratorium on those that we were not going to give none until a clear study was done. So I think that at this time, I would, I would not uh support to bring up for us to increase no parking uh this time for any areas.
All right.
Thank you.
No, don't thank you. Appreciate it. No, I do, I do concur with uh council member Montero on one thing is that the permitted parking has been a problem. It carries the problem from one street to the other, et cetera. Okay, am I, I'm not necessarily looking at doing anything impacting the permit parking right now. If it were up to me, I would take back all that permit parking. I'd eliminate it all. If that's what we want to do, we should just do it. Okay?
I support that.
Because we're, we're getting people that are always asking and they're upset because we're not gonna grant them the permit parking.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna do it, we just cancel all the permit parking and it is what it is, okay?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
I agree with that too.
I agree with that. Bring it on the next, bring it on the next uh
I'll agree with that too. Thank you.
So that's cool, right? But the only thing that I do maybe not completely agree is that I do think we should increase the um some of these fees. Uh maintain or increase specific uh penalties here. Especially now that we have this whole uh thing with the T parking. Um the problems and the calls that I've been getting have come from Um the problems and the calls that I've been getting have come from neighborhoods where there's uh homes, single-family homes. It's not on, it's, I haven't received calls from the areas where there's apartments. I've received them from residential areas. There's always somebody that puts their, there's two spaces, clear two spaces. And somebody just sh- straddles both spaces. When their family member comes home, then they move it back and then they squeeze it in. Okay? We're not enforcing that. Maybe we're not enforcing it. Okay, maybe it's an issue of enforcement. But you know, or or whatever. Maybe, maybe we're mis- almost guided here thinking that the permit, increasing the the fees, the, I mean, the penalties are gonna help. But we need to get some enforcement, Chief Ishi, on stuff like that. I think, I think we need to redirect some of the things that are parking enforcement people are looking after. I think they're going after uh I don't know, I've been getting some feedback lately from some of the residents where it's trivial things that they're going after. They get on one thing, they're looking at registrations and stuff. Uh I've had a complaint recently from one of our parking enforcement uh a a parking enforcement officer Ramirez. And I've got several complaints about that individual. Um um where they're going after trivial things. When we have cars that, a bigger problem is cars that are not, that are parked in front of the garage and are into the sidewalk. People have to go into the street to walk around and uh make their way along the sidewalk. Those are clear violations, where you can just go down a street and give violations in instantly. What's a mother with her to- with her toddler in a baby carriage going to do? She has to gonna go, has to go into the street, risks possibly getting too far into the street and getting hit by a car because a car is jutting onto the street. I'm willing to look at whatever increases in penalties our city attorney comes up with. Um I think that's, that'll be a good point at which we can debate that if we pass them or not. Um but I think we uh we 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 brought something up right now, which was the parking permit uh s- areas that I think we should just eliminate all around the city.
I second on that.
Let's be careful about them. Um
It brings the resolution.
There are specific areas where this might need to be maintained. Okay, I'm going to mention this. In Monita Gardens, there are about um three or four enclaves, I would say, where there's single-family homes. And those people have choose- chosen to maintain their single-family residences, but they're in the middle of the whole area where all those apartments. I would choose maybe possibly just to maintain those types of single-family permit park because of na- by nature. It's not by request, it's because of our, of our creation that we decided these people need to have parking on the streets for the, for themselves and their cars. Or else they can't survive here as a single-family uh residents, right? But in some of these other areas where people are just coming and petitioning and then one street gets it, five months later, the next street wants it. And then the next street wants it, the next street wants it. So it becomes problematic. Uh Ms. uh City Manager? And uh Mr. City Attorney, can you just take some of our notes and fashion something up based on kind of what we're talking about with regards to that, please?
Yes, understood.
And that's it. We need to move on to the next subject. And Mr. uh Mr. City Attorney, can you still come up with like select areas where maybe we could increase some of the penalties and where it's not wise to do it? And your best, and then your best judgment, then we can debate it as a city council.
Yes, I'll propose a resolution with an amended bail schedule.
Item number five is a presentation on college resources. Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, you have the floor?
That's not my presentation.
Item number five, National College Resources Foundation?
Yes, we're, I'm here. How are you?
Oh, hi, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, how's everyone doing this evening?
So yes, ma'am, uh you were listed under Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, but uh I guess we as the city council invite you to talk to us uh less than ten minutes, about ten minutes worth of uh uh info- great, great information about the National College Resources Foundation, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yes, uh actually, you guys are awesome. So I could be a part of anybody's team here. You guys are all about caring for the community and that's what it's all about. Uh that's who National College Resources Foundation, we're a five oh one C three nonprofit organization with a mission to curtail high school dropout rate and increase enrollment degree indoor certificate programs among underserved, underrepresented, at-risk, low-resourced homeless and foster students. I originally, when I came on here, I was just like, gonna talk to you about Latino College Expo, which is our event coming up this Saturday, a virtual event. But as I listened to you guys and heard the passion in your voice about your community, I said, I have to share that we're actually working with Centinelli Valley Union High School District. We've been working with them since the pandemic happened and really working with the students, all the students in um the Hawthorne area. So we, I was just at Hawthorne High School today, actually, with the principal Yang, talking to her and the college counselors and just really trying to make sure that the students have a plan after high school. So I really would like to talk to you. We have our program coming up this Saturday, Latino College Expo. It's our eighth annual. We actually have been around for twenty-two years. We started with the Black College Expo at the Los Angeles Convention Center. So we've been doing that for twenty-two years. We have, we start the Latino College Expo eight years ago, and we also have a STEAM Expo. But we've helped over a half a million kids get into college. We've given away over a million dollars in scholarships through raising funds and we've actually helped uh over a billion dollars. We've helped helped students be able to get scholarships and also grants to be able to attend college. So we're working with your babies. So I thought, hey, let me just share with you, it's really much deeper than the Latino College Expo and the Black College Expo. And the STEAM Expo is really about helping students navigate life, helping them socially emotionally, helping them understand that they matter, know that we care for them, and really helping them and their families navigate so they can be productive to themselves, their fam- families and their communities. So that's what it's all about today. I have our team members here, our director of our Latino College Expo and also the director of logistics, Veronica Brias-Cumberfeld here. So Veronica, I don't know if you wanna share anything more about Latino College Expo? And Joan is who put this whole thing together. She's our PR PR person. So uh I don't know, Veronica, if you wanna share. I do wanna show you guys a video about who we are so that you can know. Um but I'll let Veronica share. I always feel like let's end with the video, but.
Yeah, but um when I, I just wanna say buenas tardes uh to all the council members and thank you so much for allowing us to participate. Um I could go on in Spanish, but I don't know that everyone on your council there speaks Spanish. So I figured we'll just uh keep it, keep it neutral and and continue in English. Um but I just wanted to let you know that the Latino College Expo um is obviously something that has been long coming. We've been doing it for eight years, but it should have been twenty-two years ago that we started this. Uh in the next twenty years, we'll have fifty-three percent of all of California of Latino. So it just goes to show the growth of this population sector. And it affects every single school district across the country. So we have found that with the Latino College Expo, we have now been able to take and hold the hands of the parents who don't understand how to navigate through the system, which there are many, many parents who just don't get it. One, because they don't speak the language. Two, because it's just ha- shoot, I mean, I went through it with my kids, let alone that was complicated to figure out. I can't imagine someone who doesn't have maybe the level of education. Um it makes it that much more difficult for them. So it's our role and that's what we specialize in is to be able to just take the parents by the hand, the students by the hand, and show them that there is a will and a way for them to get to that next level. And uh and then it's not a four-year college for everyone. So we represent four-year colleges, universities, private colleges, certificate programs, trade schools, junior colleges, all of them, because not everyone is destined to be in a four-year college. So but we've covered the gambit. We allow and help students um understand just how that next level and that next step, uh what it takes to get into college.
Yeah, and you might say, why Latino College Expo? There's a lot of Hispanic-serving institutions. So this is a way to actually highlight them, allow the Hispanic students to be able to, and it's actually open to everybody, but it's basically, you look at undocumented students, you look at dreamers. This also deals with that, financial aid. We have seminars that are gonna happen, how to prepare for college, to booming careers, how to pay for college. So it deals with financial aid, DACA Dream Act scholarships. We also have causes important to the Hispanic community that we want to dive into. And then we have Disney, one of our partners, that's gonna be charting your course to doing uh internships. We have a lot of partnerships pretty much with all hundred and sixteen community colleges, all the Cal States, the UCs, the HBCUs. And we just wanna be able to be able to provide the light in the world for students to be able to navigate and be successful. So that's really who we are. Uh the Black College Expo naturally focuses on the HBCUs and it also, everyone's invited there too, but it also highlights the history and legacy of HBCUs. So I wanted to, uh and the STEAM Expo talks about Students Think STEAM to increase diversity among students of color, particularly black and brown, and women in the field, in the STEAM category that comes up November fifth. But I would love to share with you just a brief video, cuz I know you guys have been in this for a while, to kind of give you a little bit of who we are. So I am gonna do that right now. Here we go. Tell me know if you can hear. Can you hear it?
Yes, yes.
Hello, I'm Dr. Teresa Price. I'm the founder of National College Resources Foundation, also the founder of Black College Expo, Latino College Expo, Students Think STEAM Expo, HBCU Football Combine, HBCU Basketball Showcase, and the STEAM Program, and the Movement Enrichment Program. Well, National College Resources Foundation is an educational enhancement agency. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit organization with a mission to curtail high school dropout rate and increase enrollment to degree indoor certificate programs among underserved, underrepresented, at-risk, low-resourced homeless and foster students. So we work with students daily to actually confront the disparities in the educational system, but also to make students feel like they're wanted, feel like they're needed. So we actually are on a mission to close the gap in achievement, workforce, and economic disparities.
So I went into school with baggage. I walked out of school knowing myself worth.
So the Black College Expo is an event in which we bring in colleges. We focus on HBCUs in terms of highlighting them, but we have all other colleges and universities too, educational programs. And it's all designed to give students a one-stop shop where they could get accepted on the spot, say the colleges waive application fees on the spot, and also give away scholarships on the spot. Black College Expo was started because of the Prop two oh nine, which banned affirmative action in the California college system. So it was affirmative action was banned, but we now, we have helped over five hundred thousand kids get into college. We've given away over a million dollars in scholarships. We've helped students secure over one billion dollars in scholarships and grants. We've helped eight hundred and seventy-eight athletes get athletic scholarships. We've placed over a thousand students in internships and careers. And it just goes on. And we're just on a mission to change the world. So Black College Expo was really the pivotal or the main, was the springboard really to everything else.
It's so great to see the Latino community getting knowledge and guidance that they need. Um kids being able to look at people that look like them and see them being successful, having so many different options.
Latino College Expo, actually, when you think about the additional needs of undocumented students, students that are English learners, what are some of the benefits that, you know, dreamers? What are the benefits to them? Like, there's Hispanic-serving institutions and a lot of people don't know there's institutions, college, universities, additional resources just for students that are Hispanic descent or uh Latin descent, for them to navigate through college, for them to get their degrees, for them to be successful. And that's what Latino College Expo is. It brings all Hispanic-serving institutions under one roof, and we talk to them about financial aid, how to pay for college, how to navigate through the college experience. STEAM, well, that is a Students Think STEAM. We call that Students Think STEAM because we want students to think about science, technology, engineering, art, agriculture, aerospace, and aviation, and math. That's why STEAM started. We have a mobile airstream trailer that goes through the community to engage students in hands-on activities. So we have over twenty different curriculums, and we pretty much drive it up. It has Mac computers in it, it has three D printers in it. And students can actually engage that day onsite and get a full view of what it's like to work circuitry, how electricity is made, solar energy. There's a huge gap when it comes to people going into STEAM fields, and that's where all the jobs are. There's gonna be over fifty-five million jobs next year, and STEAM is one of the biggest categories. But we're not going into those jobs. And when it comes to African-Americans or black students and brown students, we're not going in, women. So the STEAM program is designed to engage students, get them excited about going into STEAM fields. The movement confronts uh the disparities in the educational system. It confronts it. So we basically work with students. We provide intervention, mentoring, tutoring, college and career planning, college readiness, student-athlete assistance, as well as internships and career placement. So we might help you with your resume, help you with your essay. We help people wanna graduate, wanna do well in school, because we work with them and empower them to know how great they are. Through our village concept and the concepts and me- methodologies that we use, we've helped graduation rates at high schools. We work with, you know, black and brown, whatever it takes for students to be empowered to wanna do great. Cuz you can tutor people all day, but you gotta remember, they have to wanna do it. And they have to wanna be it. You can't just give it to them. And that's what the movement is all about. We started these programs as a way to offer additional resources for students to be able to excel, do well, feel good about themselves. And so we really wanna make sure that we offer resources for students to be able to excel, regardless of where they come from, regardless of background, regardless of, okay, they didn't get the grades, cuz a lot of students don't do well because of things that they're dealing with, adversities, environment, you know, home life, school life, there could be a lot of things. So we wanna look past that and know that there's a jewel in everyone. Everyone has that diamond inside of them. And that's what National College Resources is all about.
Okay, so as I close, I just wanted to share, that's who we are. And just this last year during COVID, we serviced, this is all Hawthorne uh schools, all, you know, Hawthorne, Landale, all the schools in Centinelli Valley Union. Uh thirteen hundred and ninety-six students. We uh also helped uh get the FAXR rate from twenty-nine percent over to close to sixty percent. We gave away seventeen hundred and five dollars in gift cards to students to motivate them. We also provided seventy-five hundred dollars to students in the Hawthorne area for uh COVID relief. And we provided, and we helped to uh students get two hundred and two thousand dollars in scholarships to be able to attend college. So that's just some of the success and how we invested in your community. And we really care about your, our students. I call them our babies too. So that's who we are. And then I'm done. That's it.
No, thank you so much, ma'am, for your presentation. Uh we're close to the, we're probably past the ten-minute mark, but I do wanna recognize that Councilwoman Angie Reyes English is the one who brought this item forward.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Go ahead, Councilwoman. Councilwoman?
Uh yes, hello ladies, and thank you, um Dr. Price and Ms. Scott. I did get your information uh with regards to the Latino um College Expo and including your Black um College Expo. Uh I have a testimony to give. Uh back in two thousand and four, my daughter attended the Black Expo at the L.A. Convention Center and was accepted by uh Xavier University in New Orleans, where she's been now living, and received her bachelor's in pre-med biology with a minor in chemistry and psychology. So I really have to give kudos to you.
Wow, woo, you're gonna make me cry.
I have three daughters and uh, you know, they're, they're, they're the fruits of losing her high school here in Landale. So, and that's part of the Centinelli Valley Union School District. So I I can't push enough and express enough on uh the the efforts you're all making to to put hands on um in getting the word out, but more importantly, recruiting, educating, and using your experience to assure that those that are underserved are not left out. And so, again, I just have to say thank you.
Thank you.
Uh I I appreciate all that you're doing and look forward uh to many more students here in Hawthorne benefiting from your efforts. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. You know, we have a student at Lloyd, you know, Lloyd is a continuation school that we were able to give money for and don't have to pay for, and she's at Benedict College right now. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Montero, you have a question?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Price, for your presentation. Thank you, ladies, for coming tonight. Um excellent, excellent presentation. Uh because, you know, I I used to be on the school board for Hawthorne School District for eleven years, so education is one of my passions in life. So uh because, you know, when you're talking about uh college and and even to go to the uh uh four-year college or the two-year college, uh it takes money, right? Uh and for uh even when I came to this And even when I came to this country in 1984, you know, I went to four-year college, and it cost me a penny, and I'm still paying for it, right, all my education. So the process for scholarship actually is stressful, one. So especially, like you said, when kids have, you know, different things going on in their lives, and then some of their parents have issues, social and economic issues to deal with. So for you guys to help them navigate the process and make reasons is fantastic, is phenomenal. So my question to you is, you're going to have a Latino Expo where? And I would love to see that maybe sometime now, next year, you guys will do some of these Expo right here in our city of Hawthorne, at our Hawthorne Memorial Center. We have plenty of room there. So to see some of these Expo right here in our neighborhood, since you've been working with Sentinel Valley.
Yes.
District. So it's a tremendous work you guys are doing, so my hat goes off to you, all of you, and please continue to do so, and anything we can do to help, just one call away, okay?
Okay, excellent. No problem. Thank you so much for sharing.
And let me just say, let me just say thank you to Denise Randall that helped in connecting us, and her mother, late, late mother Dorothy Randall, and which we always think of her when we do College Expo. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Adios.
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 Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for all communications.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, I will not be reading the guidelines tonight because we did not receive emails or phone calls for public comments. So we can go on to the next piece.
Mr. City Attorney, is our city clerk off the hook? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I believe so, since there is no comments.
Okay, so just double-checking because, you know...
I did my homework.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, good. All right, so we're good. Thank you so much, Mr. City Clerk. Thanks for mentioning that. And now we know for the future. This has never happened before, ever, ever, ever since I've been here, so, okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have the consent calendar for your, for your, for your department?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are five items on my consent calendar. Item 8, 8, 9, 12, 14, and 15 for your consideration and approval. Item A, approval waivers of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 9, City Treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item 12, Resolution Number 8300, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, appointing interim City Attorney Robert Kim as the city's alternate delegate to the independent city's risk management authority governing board. Item 13 has been pulled by the interim City Attorney and interim City Manager for now due to the need to clarify the MOU. Item 14, Resolution Number 8302, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, providing for the terms and conditions of employment of those employees represented by the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association according to the provisions of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, and authorizing the interim manager to execute HMEA memorandum of understanding, bargaining agreement between the City of Hawthorne and HMEA. Item 15, Resolution Number 8303, Resolution of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming September 15, 2021 through October 15, 2021, a Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Hawthorne, California. Mr. Mayor, may I have a motion to approve items 8, 9, 12, 14, and 15?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
All right, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Uh, really quick, interim City Manager Von Norris? Can you have the ladies, can you have the ladies in the administrative office decorate the cabinet at the entrance to City Hall?
Yes, absolutely.
With the guard slider. Item 15, even though there's not a lot of traffic, at least for the employees that are coming in and out, and the little bit of traffic that we have, so people can take a look at that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Item number 17, public hearing?
Now is the time and place for a public hearing, an introduction of ordinance 224, or approving engineering and traffic surveys prepared by Hartz Dog and Crabill, Inc. for the City of Hawthorne, and amending Chapter 10.16 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code relating to prima facie speed limits on various streets within the city. No written communications were received.
So there was no communications. Anybody else like to speak on the topic? If not, I'll declare the hearing closed on this item. Ordinance number 2224, can you read that into the record, please?
Sure. Ordinance number 2224, first reading. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving engineering and traffic surveys prepared by Hartz Dog and Crabill, Inc. for the City of Hawthorne, and amending Chapter 10.16 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code relating to prima facie speed limits on various streets within the city, for introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Okay, it's been moved. Miss, Councilmember Montero, you had a handup?
I know. Got it.
All right. Item number 18, public hearing?
Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft 2020, 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPR for the Community Development Block Grant, CEPG, and Home Investment Partnerships Home Programs. Housing Department's declaration publication filed. No written communications were received.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? If not, I'll declare the hearing closed, so order. There's a recommended motion. I don't think that, I'll go ahead and read that, or would you like to read it, Mr. City Clerk?
All you. Go for it.
Oh, me? Oh, the same? Okay.
Yep.
So, recommend motion, the staff recommends that the City Council do one of three things. Is that correct? Uh, Mr. City Attorney, we're given, we need to choose out of these three items? Or just choose all of them as a, is that what you're recommending?
I think if Ms. Mack is available, I think this is...
Yes, three. Sounds like all three.
It's all three. Thank you. This is Kimberly Mack.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, just clarify that, because we have the, we, you know, we don't usually see stuff in numerical order. We just see bullet points usually. Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion on all three items, please.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Who was the second on? Who was the second?
Mr. Montero, Councilmember Montero?
Okay. All right, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes, however, I had a question.
Go ahead. Well, no, let's go through the roll call, and then we'll just go back to the question, right?
Okay. Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Councilwoman?
Uh, so Kimberly, question with regards to the, I'm assuming the home funds are the rental assistance program. Is that correct?
The home funds are for any of the programs that are geared towards that specific program. So if it's HRP, any of the funding that's eligible for home funding.
Okay, and we still have, we still have dollars that we haven't spent, correct?
That is correct.
And are those going to carry over to 22?
They've already been stated in the 22 Action Plan, yes.
Okay, and applicants that are still applying for rental assistance, are we still getting those applicants today?
We are still getting applications, and we are still assisting. We do not have a closed date on that program.
Okay, and the other question is, can we modify or amend the program that allows for folks to continue to apply even after, or say, COVID? The reason I say this is because it sounds that I'm getting more concerns from constituents that have applied and didn't qualify because they didn't come, become ill or become unemployed during that time, but currently are now experiencing that.
Our program is not tied to the eviction moratorium or the COVID. It has a deadline of five years from the date that the funding was submitted to the agency. So it'll stay open until the funds are exhausted or the City Council puts them to other uses.
Okay, so what about re-applicants that have already received assistance? Are they allowed to go a second round of assistance?
They are unless, so long as they're not assisted for the same months they were previously assisted for by our program or any other program.
Okay, so are we getting that information out to the community? I'd like to see that happen, interim City Manager. Thank you.
You're welcome. I apologize, my camera's not working.
That's okay.
So, interim City Manager, can you acknowledge Councilwoman's request?
Absolutely. The directive has been received, and staff will work to get that information out to the community members.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number 19 is ordinances, and we don't have any for consideration tonight. General Matters. Next, we have the General Matters, item number 21, which is the update of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Ms. Lopez, can you give us a brief presentation on that, please?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. We appreciate the opportunity to bring you this update on the American Rescue Plan Act. First, I'd like to thank everyone who has contributed to pulling together all of these recommendations. It was truly a team effort, and it took into consideration council direction, along with staff recommendations and requests. The first few slides that you're going to see are just a recap of the guidelines, and then I'll move into the recommendations. Let me go ahead and pull up my presentation. Can everybody see that okay? All right. All right, so, City of Hawthorne, as you know, received funding for $30.5 million for the ARPA program. We received $15.2 million of that, of that amount in July. The funds that we received have a deadline to be spent by December of 2026, but we must designate which programs and the use of funds by December of 2024. These are a list of the eligible uses. We'll go over those quickly. You've seen these in prior meetings and prior reports, but I just want to make sure everyone understands what is eligible for the program. So COVID-19 response, prevention, testing, and treatment, improvement of ventilation systems and public facilities such as our City Hall or the Police Department, or over in the recreation area, mental health treatment, other behavioral health services, assistance to unemployed workers and small businesses, assistance to nonprofit organizations, assistance to households, aid to impacted industries, including including tourism, travel, hospitality, and other impacted industries, and aid to disproportionately impacted populations and communities. This also provides for premium pay to eligible workers, provides for government services, which includes a replacement of government revenue lost during COVID-19. The calculation for the City of Hawthorne was $17.2 million shortfall through the period of 12/31/20, and also to make necessary investments in infrastructure for clean water or broadband services. So this, at this point, I want to speak about the recommendations, oops, hold on one second, let's go back. I would like to speak on the recommendations for the revenue recovery. So council at the previous meeting authorized the transfer of 75% of the revenue loss, which was $11.4 million. And with that transfer, we have come up with these nine programs that we would like to fund with these ARPA funds. So the first one is HERO Pay for essential workers, which is an estimated $148,000. Vital Medical, which would provide mental health, a mental health clinician to respond to emergency calls for the Police Department, which is an estimated $200,000. Bipolar ionization system for the Police Department, which is about $45,000. Air filtration with UV sterilization module for the basement, $75,000. Personal protective equipment and training, an estimated $15,000. Emergency kits for City Hall and the Police Department at a cost of $80,000. Sanitation and continued sanitation could be for a year, maybe two years, three years if necessary, which would be $360,000 per year. Number eight, we have EnerGov Virtual City Hall Project, which began in March of last year, and that's an estimated remaining cost of almost $400,000. And also the revitalization of city properties at an estimate of about $500,000. So the total, once the funds are transferred of $11.4 million in recovery of the revenue loss, would be programs of $1.8 million. Once these programs are approved by council, then staff can then move forward in implementing these programs. Council and staff can then continue brainstorming and bring additional recommendations in the future, because obviously, if we're transferring $11.4 million, there's an opportunity to bring forth quite a few more programs, if that's what you'd like to see.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it okay now? Is it okay, Mayor?
Do you have a bunch more to go, Ms. Mack?
I've got, I've got about four more slides.
Okay, I'll wait.
No, go ahead right now. If it's on this, go ahead.
Yeah, it's online item number one. I was curious with regards to the HERO Pay for essential workers, if this is retroactive.
This is for, so it hasn't been provided to city employees, so it wouldn't be retroactive if we had paid it in the prior fiscal year, but because it's something that will be paid or has been approved to be paid in the future, that would be eligible for that. So we can't go back and apply it to expenses that have already been paid for. It has to be for something that's currently being done in the current fiscal year.
Of course. So if I were to request it to be retroactive, that $148,000, the number would change then, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Can, can you get back to us and let us know how much that's going to be?
It, and, well, we would need a little more detail as to how you would like that to work. So what, what was done is...
Well, I think what I'm trying to get at is because we've had, City Manager, we've had discussions with groups that included HERO Pay, and so...
Right, so this is, this is actually the estimate for what was discussed.
Okay, that's all I need to know. If that's, that's the case, I don't need, okay, thank you.
Yes, this is per new MOUs for all bargaining groups.
Thank you. Okay.
I have questions on these items.
Go ahead.
What is bipolar ionization system for the PD? What is that?
If we have Alan or Akbar on the line, they could probably, this was one of their requests, and they could probably give you better information on that than I would. Are either one on the line?
All right.
Akbar or Alan, or are you on the line?
Akbar is present.
We do recognize that Mr. Barry Foster is here with us, but if we don't need to go to him, let's just keep charging forward with your presentation.
Okay.
I also, I have another question too, on this one item.
Yes.
The emergency kits for City Hall and PD, what does that, what is the scope of that request? What is that?
We do have Mr. Akbar ready for questions if needed.
Pardon me?
We do have Mr. Akbar ready for questions if needed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Despite, because of a weak contact, echo engineering, they're doing the maintenance for City Hall and Police Department. Basically, what they come and they change the filter to the new requirement for COVID, and they have some kind of sensor, they put it there to clean their conditioning.
Okay, that's fine. The other question is the emergency kits for City Hall and PD. Who gets the emergency kits? How many kits are we talking about? Who gets them? And what do they consist of?
Basically, what happened, this is the Police Department and City Hall. We have some, we need to have some backup for emergency. And if something happened to any employee or customer, we need to have that one. Before, it's going to be each department get that.
Defibrillator? Is that the defibrillator?
No.
Yes?
No.
So what, what is in the emergency kit? That was my question. So what, what is in the emergency kit? That was my question. What is in it?
I think the risk manager is working on that to put it there.
If I can jump in, I think one of the items with this budget here, proposed budget is the approval of the budget to put together those, those emergency kits for City Hall. As Mr. Akbar said, that our risk manager is working with this budget to assemble kits for each department. So what we can do, we can report back with the items that we're intending to put in those kits and how many kits we're gonna have.
Okay.
Alright. But just real quick, Von, there was, there was a, there was a request that I had made for defibrillators across the board for the yard, the memorial center here, the police department. I asked, I also asked for training for all staff starting in July, CPR, etc. So I haven't seen any of that.
Absolutely. The defibrillators have been completed through the city. We were in the midst of scheduling CPR for all staff and then we had the spike with the new strand and we tabled that until we can get a good hold on how we're gonna move forward with CPR in-person training. But the defibrillators have been installed throughout the city.
Okay, follow-up is always important. So there's no duplicated effort. So that would have been good to know. Okay.
Understood.
Let's, let's charge forward with the presentation.
Okay, I'll move on to, so once we process the transfer of the eleven point four million, there's a balance left of three point eight million that can be used for recovery projects. One of the projects that staff is recommending is telehealth van services. They provide daily virtual telehealth social support to hard-to-reach low-income and homeless residents with assistance in mental health, addiction recovery, homeless resources and probation. Each van will be staffed and connected to local agency partners that would assist low-income and homeless residents for private individual telehealth sessions. This is an item that council has already approved, so, and the estimate that, that we have on this program is eight hundred and seventy five thousand.
Thank you.
The next project in that three point eight million total is homelessness pallet, pallet shelters with an estimate of one point three million. This would be transitional housing, temporary homeless solutions. The aim is to initially house thirty people suffering from homelessness, provide supportive services and then place them into permanent housing.
Thank you.
The next recommendation would be for health and wellness events for six hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. This would have city staff working with organizations to provide food distribution, provide additional information and education regarding vaccines, provide a specific number of vaccinations per event with whatever amount is designated, and also provide COVID testing for peace of mind to anyone who still has not been able to receive vaccinations.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
With regards to the vaccinations.
Yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that there are groups and organizations that are of medical expertise, physicians, nurses, etc., that provide vaccine locations, real time, and that those are free of charge to the residents and those vaccines are paid for by the federal government funding monies. So my question is, how would, why would we need to, you know, put out monies for vaccinations that are ultimately paid by the government, not through our recovery dollars?
Well, we would work with other organizations to provide all of these services. So part of it would be funded by ARPA and part of it will hopefully be funded by these other agencies. Because we do have other organizations who provide food distribution and our recreation and community services have been working with those organizations. So the city may not have to spend any ARPA money initially until those funds are depleted.
I'd like to ultimately reserve or assure that we keep an eye on those dollars so that maybe we could reallocate those to other avenues of need. If there's not, you know, like I said, government funding already for vaccination and we're not in the business of paying for vaccines, it's already done for us. So don't wanna, you know, take away monies that ultimately we don't have to.
Absolutely, yeah. We will definitely make sure that whatever can be funded through other organizations will definitely be looked into.
Yeah, please provide us two additional avenues that some of this money can be redirected to.
Through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just to go back a little bit on this issue that Ms. English brought up. So the other thing that we can spend some of this money is, is on outreach and education and PR, right? Because, because like she said, there is free vaccine, free testing, but is the message, are the messages getting to our residents? How the message getting to them? Because if we don't do PR or outreach and education, it will be, people will not know about this, this, this activity. So I think we can spend some money on PR, okay? To educate our people, because believe it or not, you know, people are dying in our community. Because last week, a twenty, a twenty-year-old died of COVID and she left an eighteen-month baby. So we need education.
Yes, we'll definitely look into that as well. Alright, and our
Let's keep moving forward, please.
Our, our last recommendation for this three point eight million is business recovery assistance for about a million dollars. So we released a survey last week and staff will provide a summary of possible assistance programs once we collect all that data. The due date on the survey was towards the end of October, so we're hoping we can bring that back to council at the beginning of November with more options as to how we would assist businesses that have been affected by COVID nineteen. Also, assistance to local restaurants to enhance their outdoor dining facilities, if that is still a need in the community.
Okay, let's go, keep going.
And then finally, in July of twenty twenty-two, the city will receive the second payment of fifteen point two million. Some of the items that we're not going to be able to get to in this round were recommended by council for investments in infrastructure for clean water and for broadband. So things to look forward to for the next round, things to think about, and also for council to keep in mind for the next six months or so, where they can also provide additional recommendations and staff will continue to come forward with, with other ideas and provide a spending plan for this additional fifteen point two, six, point two million, hopefully prior to receiving those funds. And that is the end of my presentation. If there are any additional questions, we do have, I believe, Barry Foster on the line and myself and city manager.
Are we, are we good city council with the presentation? Or do we have any?
Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, yes, I am happy with the presentation. The only question that I have, Felice, is about the broadband. If there is any money left for this allocation, this, you know, number one allocation. Because you know how the, some of the areas, especially east of Prairie, all the, all the Monita Garden area, the, all the apartment buildings, they had very, it was a challenge for them to get on Zoom for, for the online classes, right? It was a lot of people that didn't have access to the internet and, and some of the district would have had to pay for those people to get, to get internet so they can log in on Zoom to do long-distance learning. So I was wondering if there is any money currently for us to begin planning the process, because I would love to see even the city to have, you know, Wi-Fi, completely Wi-Fi for the whole city. But if we could begin on that section of Hawthorne, east of Prairie, that is the challenged community, to bring Wi-Fi or broadband there soon as, soon as possible.
Go ahead. Okay, can you take note of that, please?
Yes, and what, what we'll do is we will bring in our IT manager and hopefully he can give us an estimate of what costs we're looking at and then we'll be able to let you know if that can be part of this round of, of projects.
Alright. Yeah, no, I like, thank you, Councilman Montero and select parts of North Hawthorne, also where there's a lot of density as well, if there's some disadvantages there. If you could also roll that in, Felice.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Reyes English and Mayor Potem, Olivia Valentine. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just real brief, thank you, Felice, thank you, and Barry, thank you. Look forward to additional efforts, including the other monies that we have coming next year. And it's my hope that folks that are listening tonight and watching tonight, including the businesses and those that still need assistance with rental assistance for their living situation, please submit and there's money here that we need to use and we want to use it ultimately to benefit the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Yes, I just want to mention, as a follow-up to Councilmember Montero's query about broadband, we have already installed the, you know, because, through the, through the South Bay cog, the, the, the actual, the spine of, of a broadband system throughout the region. So the question was always going to be, how much did we want to extend it? Because we already have one facility for it that we were going to pay for. We already agreed to that. But the question was always, how far were we going to extend it? How much did we want to pay to do that? So I agree that we need to extend it into the residence, into the residential area. So I'm going to suggest, Felice, that you contact Josh, who is on top of our, what we've already installed and what we would have to do in order to get more more, more of these facilities into the residence, into the residential areas. I assume it's going to be somewhat costly, but it will be less costly than it would have been because we already have the basic structure.
Yeah, definitely we'll contact Josh on this issue.
So we're, we're ready to move on.
So what we would just like is to make sure that you agree with all of the recommendations that we've made. If there are additional items that can be included, if there are monies available, we will look into that as well. But if you are in agreement with the items that were recommended, we just want to make sure that, that we get your okay to move forward with those programs.
I don't believe you've met any resistance or any major challenges or superbodifications. We're just like, as Councilwoman, as Mayor Potem Valentine and Councilmember Montero, the city council mentioned about the Wi-Fi.
Right.
We do, what we mean by spine, I mean, we're like, what the heck do we mean by spine? We already
Fiber, fiber network, you call fiber network.
South Bay fiber network has already been installed in our city.
It's been installed, I know, I know, I'm just
But it, but it has, it has, it, it's only installed in one area.
Which is
You're going to extend it. We have to pay for more. We have to pay for it to be extended.
I would like to see fiber optic cable that's been laid along Hawthorne Boulevard activated as soon as possible. I mean, that, that's going to be the biggest proof of concept as to how practical, how beneficial it's going to be. Once we have that up, you know, then we absolutely can start extending along the corridors maybe and then within the communities. But like, I, I do agree those two areas should receive first dibs at, at the Wi-Fi, you know, being placed in there. So we do have, we do have infrastructure, so it's good. Alright, thank you very much, Felice.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Barry Foster, for standing by.
Mr. Mayor, so we don't need the, the vote for them to go ahead, right?
No, so this is just, there's nothing to vote on.
Alright.
Thanks for asking that. Mr. Interim CD Manager, the agenda reflects, you have items twenty-three to twenty-seven on the city manager's consent calendar. Can you please, can you proceed by entering these into the record, sir? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and other council members. For your consent or for your approval, item twenty-three is approval of purchase order of South Bay Ford and South Bay Regional Authority for the purchase of four replacement vehicles. Item twenty-four is approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two blanket purchase orders. Item twenty-five is to receive on file Housing Authority annual report for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. Item number twenty-five is to receive, and, excuse me, just read that. Item twenty-six is to approve progress payment number two in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars due to Martinez Landscaping Company of Silmar, California for Holly Park, Ramona Park Improvement Project, project number twenty dash oh six. Item twenty-seven is approval of progress payment number six in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, eighty-five cents to Sidet contractors corporation, DBA Shonery of Bounty, California for project number twenty dash twelve, Curry Avenue Project, Phase Two.
I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
The second was by Mayor Potem Valentine.
Yeah, yeah, we'll give it to her today.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council members voting yes.
Okay. Mayor Potem Valentine, I'm gonna step out really briefly, real quickly, and can you go into item, present item twenty-eight?
Alright. So now we have the city attorney's consent calendar. Interim City Attorney, Robert Kim, please.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I have three items on the agenda for this evening for your approval. Item number twenty-nine is to approve the amended agreement number one between the City of Hawthorne and Telehealth Van LLC for providing daily virtual telehealth van, particularly designated for the city attorney's pre-filing diversion program. Item number thirty is to deny a claim for breach of master lease agreement by Hawthorne Airport LLC. Item number thirty-one is to approve a payment for True Course Aviation Insurance Services.
I'd like to pull number twenty-nine for discussion.
Alright, we'll pull number twenty-nine and I, may I have a motion on the other two? I will move to approve thirty-one.
Second.
Then we have a roll call on thirty and thirty-one, please?
Yes, we can. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
So go ahead, Councilmember Patterson on number twenty-nine.
Thank you. I just had a quick question for the city attorney, or the city attorney. What is a pre-filing diversion program?
So what a pre-filing, this is mainly a program for our prosecution unit that, that prosecutes misdemeanor offenses within the City of Hawthorne. Over some twenty-some years that I've been in charge of the Criminal Prosecution Unit, we see a lot of cases for minor crimes, misdemeanor crimes. A lot of it involves narcotic dependence, domestic violence, things of that nature or mental illness. And too often they get charged with a misdemeanor crime right from either citation or arrest. And it turns, and most of these defendants in these cases are Hawthorne residents. And what we're offering to do with this pre-filing diversion program is when we get a misdemeanor referral for filing charges with the court, before we file any charges with the court, through telehealth van, we can have the, each suspect or potential defendant come in and we encourage them to participate in this diversion program where they, if they can complete either some kind of assistance for narcotics, mental health counseling or domestic violence counseling, and they're able to stay out of trouble for about ten months, then we reject their case from filing from court so they don't have this record. And when we do that, there is a petition that we can assist these individuals so that they can seal and have their arrest record sealed as well so that their employment, for potential future employment, they have a cleaner record. So for their background check, that's what the program instills.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll 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 inter- oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were back. Mayor, we're we're on number twenty nine, we're ready for um, we're ready for a motion.
Roll call vote, um I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Who's the second by? Councilmember Reyes English?
We'll give it to you, yes. Councilwoman English.
Alright, councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, are we good with all those items? Okay, there was a discussion on one and uh clean vote on the other one. Discussion action, item number thirty three is the ad hoc committee cannabis, councilmember Patterson. Um you brought this uh uh item to the agenda, go ahead.
Yes, uh last council meeting, I have made a suggestion that we create an ad hoc committee to communicate directly with the uh the uh cannabis consultant and supporting them in bringing things to the council overall. Uh city attorney had made some recommendations about what that uh committee would look like, he had suggested one council member and uh designated members from the following departments, police department, city attorney's office, city manager's office, planning. Um I so wanted to bring up for discussion for the for the council to 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 talk about and I believe um they have to, whoever the members will have to be um suggested by the mayor and ratified by the council. But I want to suggest that we have two council persons um on said committee and maybe even somebody from outside of the city to sit on the committee, maybe a a a subject matter expert who want to volunteer their their time and expertise to um join the committee. And I still like to ask to be on the committee and and chair the committee.
Mister Mister Kim, are there any limitations?
No, uh this is for discussion and you could vote on how um council members would prefer to form this committee. Um it it is, it's okay I to have up to two council members in the committee. It's it's for you all to discuss together and vote on what is the best uh type of setting that you would prefer for this committee. Um I having said that, um I recommend that the police department be involved uh along with somebody from the city attorney's office, city manager's office and planning. Now, if you add two council members to that, then you would have even number, total of six. So I think it's a good idea to, and I recommend we add another uh person, maybe somebody from the community or or resident from the city to make it five, so that uh the the staff will be four. Someone from the community would make it five and two council members would make us a number of seven. So that would that would be fine for in terms of uh what I see from what I can recommend to city council.
Um I no, I appreciate your recommendations and I would, I was tempted to move towards having a single council member representative. Uh the only reason is because I think uh everyone here uh would like to be on this thing. I want to be on it, I think everybody else wants to be on it. So uh having two, it's just becomes, ah, you know, it's just a little bit more of a, how do we decide that? So if we just have one, I think it'd be a bit more fair. That's kind of my opinion on it.
I would mean, I mean, we would cut out the community member to keep it five and and take the recommendation of the city attorney.
I think uh it can go many different ways and then then uh having the uh community member, I'm I'll tell you what the situation is. Um if it's from a specific area, then the other neighborhood associations, other areas are gonna say, why didn't you choose somebody from our area? Why didn't you choose somebody from our area? Then it becomes like a big old, you know, it just because of big conflict. We know our, we know our different community associations and how, you know.
I I more recommend somebody from outside city hall who maybe has some some expertise in the area that might want to volunteer to be on this committee.
Okay.
I hand his up, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you.
We're putting feedback right now, go ahead.
Um well, I I I do agree with the suggestion by our interim city attorney, Robert King. Uh I'm I'm took in inclined maybe to have two council member. And believe it or not, the community person uh should be, I believe, it's a uh should be a member of the Hawthorne School District Board of Trustees. Hmm. Because they represent the whole Hawthorne basically with eleven schools. So we we want somebody that uh is on is is on that committee that could give us perspective. Uh because we, when it comes down to the schools and because we're gonna, we're gonna come up with the zoning areas, locations, location. Uh so I think uh we should have the board uh the board president from the Hawthorne School District on the committee.
Who's the president?
Doctor Eugene Crank. And.
Recommendation.
And also because I'm the one that it's been in a in a forefront about this cannabis program, because I the one who asked or need to put the five percent on the ballot. Uh for the people Hawthorne would give us a mandate to begin the discussion about cannabis program in our city. So I think that I should be on the committee. Thank you.
Alright.
Here we go.
Alright, so what's going on here?
That's my suggestion.
Alright, so look, we have member from the police, we have city and the city attorney. City manager, uh community services, if city manager, city attorney, somebody from the police department. Um planning, planning. It could be either the president or it could be the superintendent.
No, uh no, superintendent doesn't doesn't live in the community. The board member does live in the community. Superintendent doesn't live in the community.
Well, then that opens up to our city, our Sentinel Valley School Board members.
No, no, we're not open, that's because, because when you think about it, it's going to impact is the elementary schools. Eleven schools that they have, Hawthorne School District is the bigger school district in this city.
Uh well, once Sentinel Valley.
They have eleven schools compared to Sentinel, had one school in our city.
Well, we do have our high, we're looking at, we're looking at the big expanse of uh we have uh the grammar schools, that's our Hawthorne School District. Then we also have our high school district, which is in the city of Hawthorne, we also have our um Wiseburn School District, which is also.
I, Mister Mayor, but think about it, don't don't, whatever we're gonna do, it's not going to impact those areas.
So.
But it will impact the areas that Hawthorne School District have the eleven school, because they have a spread out in the community.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? Um can we start off with a vote as to how many member committee that we would like? Um so from what I've been hearing, there is first option is having two council members and four staff members and a fifth, someone from either the community, school or residential community. And the other option is having five members with one council member, four staff members. So if we can start off with that, I think we can go into further vote about how we want that fifth person um to be, either from school district or a school board or trustee or somebody from resident or somebody with expertise, things of that nature. Um so if we can, I think we can make this a little simpler if we first vote to decide whether we should have a seven member committee or five member committee.
Can I ask a quick question, please, before we we move on? Uh what about building and safety? Because uh the 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 buildings that we're going to you know, have, building and safety is gonna be a very part of it too.
Um the reason why I started with
The planning?
Particular staff section is we're we're, the committee first will look into plans of coming up with ordinance and things of regulations.
Zoning, yeah.
Yeah, zoning, so um I think, I thought about building safety and you know, we we if we made a seven member committee, we can make it all five staff, but that's up to how you want to decide to form this committee. But in in order to, this is an implementation, implementation, it's first time for the city. So I think with the consultant, we want to get feedback on about how to get this thing rolling and started with uh ordinance, what type of ordinance and things of that nature, so.
Okay, makes sense, makes sense.
Thank you, yeah. Councilwoman, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, um you know, I don't want to go as far as um allowing for the various departments at city hall to have a a role in this, for the simple fact that they are, are um departments that ultimately are beginning to be given direction through council. And I don't think we should be um, you know, including uh those departments just because of, you know, ethically and just for, just to assure that we are um keeping a a keeping it within the guidelines for this forming of of committee. Um I do want to assure that however the selection is made, that you have equal females along with males. Thus far, I'm already hearing more males than females. So I'm gonna have an issue with that and I will be speaking on that if that's the case. So if you want to show fairness and transparency, let's assure that we have an equal play with regards to who's on that board, both female and male.
Okay, so um right here, what we have is uh listed as a five person represent, five person uh committee, ad hoc committee. Uh one council member, one police member, one city attorney member, city manager and planning. Are we going to stick to that?
The wish is five versus seven, what we want to do.
I I believe I think we should keep it to seven, uh to five. Any other feedback?
I personally, again, I don't necessarily believe that we should include departments which are planning, which are, you know, building and safety, we need to stay away from these. I in all the other cities and whatnot, I have never heard of departments with those employees implemented on a on a committee. It truly, it it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a fit. We're given directions to those departments when ultimately this program that's supposed to be a good program through direction to those to those departments and then to have some of those departments sitting on that committee does not fit, it's not a fit.
Can I uh?
We can discuss the members second after.
Can 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 I make?
Total amount.
Uh real quick question to our city attorney and if you guys consider this and Mister City Manager. Uh Mister City Attorney, do you, for other cities that are considering cannabis in their cities, do you have uh any study as to what the makeup of their ad hoc committees have been? Can you some provide us something so we can know uh what would be orthodox here?
I I could look into that for you and come back at the next meeting. Um I I do not have that information on me now.
Cause I have my ideas, um councilmembers here have their ideas. We want to make it fair and we don't want us, I I would like to make it as fair as possible and not break from what it has been. I don't want to, yeah, sort of orthodox or traditional, so I would like to maybe take it back to the city attorney and the city manager to give us that. I don't know what you guys think.
Uh Mister Mayor, I have my hands up.
Yeah, go ahead. Well.
I believe we we, you know, planning, planning and the police and the city manager has to be on this ad hoc committee. Because when we're going to start create ordinance and 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 zoning areas, we need to have some expertise from our planning department. And when we're talking about safety component that's going to come with the cannabis program, police department has to be involved from the beginning. We cannot just say we're gonna do all these ordinance and but then with no expertise in the room. Okay, because we do not have expertise on all the areas. So so we do need the planning, we do need the police. The city manager, because he's automatically is the 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 chief executive of all the department that's going to make this thing work well, uh should be involved. Then I would say two council member and one community person that, like I said, it could be a a resident that has some type of knowledge of some policies and laws. Because it's going to impact, you know, the neighborhood or some schools or something like that. Uh so that's my point, because the ad hoc committee can be five, can be six, can be seven, doesn't matter. It's how it's going to operate structurally and be efficient and deliver what we need for our cannabis program to be transparent, to be good and avoid any litigation in the future. That's what we need. And the city attorney, of course, have to be involved too, because they they the one who's going to draft resolution and ordinance and stuff like.
I appreciate what you're saying. Um I still think it should be five. And uh the aspect of choosing a member of the community, how do we choose that member of the community? That single member of the community being a representative voice of the whole of Hawthorne. There are different opinions on cannabis with in this uh on the spectrum, there's like uh the one extreme to the other. What if that individual?
Sixty one percent, sixty one percent of the Hawthorne resident voted to give us that.
Okay, but it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that a representative uh could be either, what if that representative? What what is that representative is wants to be as restrictive? What if that representative wants to be aggressive? How do, how how are, how are we going to choose that individual?
And that is where you you have to put somebody there that have a balanced approach, that understand the community, that understand education, understand the health, understand the safety. And the the most credible person is a school board member.
No, no, I, okay, that's fine, a school board member.
Because they live in the community.
But.
Advocate for safety in the schools, they know everything about. The school, the schools run even sometime better than than some city government.
If you're talking of somebody aside from the school board member and just a random member of the community that comes before us and wants has express interest, that's what I'm talking about. If you're talking, if you're talking about somebody that's from a school board as the public representative, I can I can understand that.
Got elected.
I can, I can understand that, but um as opposed to just some random person that approaches.
I would not choose a random person, believe me, and and I'm not gonna choose nobody from the homeowners association at all. So you you automatically, you know, I I'll oppose that. So that's why you have to have somebody that independent mind.
Okay, so I think the debate, oh, do we, we still have two hands up?
Yep.
Um let's get through those two hands and then let's just decide if it's five or seven and then we we adjust from there. But I, to make things easier, I would still ask our city attorney and our city manager to give us what the makeup of other ad hoc committees have been in other cities. I'd still like to see that.
Mister Mayor, it doesn't matter, because we have our own, we have, we create our own system. We do not go along with some whatever other cities have done.
Okay, good.
You want to do it right.
I I I agree, I don't think we need to see what other cities have done, I I think our city attorney has made his recommendation. I I agree with uh most of what Miss Montero says as far as school board president um being part of the committee, however, I am um worried about having a five person committee. Because it just smell, smells like a lot of, it'll be uh harder, I think, to get things done. Cause the committee's job is to recommend things to the entire council, so I'm kind of leaning.
Oh, uh we lost you.
Muted, I'm kind of, I'm leaning towards a a five person uh committee, just to kind of share my thoughts.
To a five person? That's what you said, right?
I think it might be a little bit more efficient, uh we can discuss who's gonna be on that committee.
To the five person.
But I'm leaning towards, as far as numbers, a five person.
That's what I'm saying.
Who's on it second?
Okay. Are there anybody, is there anybody on council right now that would like to wait until we get the uh report from this uh from the city manager and the city attorney?
Miss English had to have hands up.
No, well, I'm posing that question, um and then I will go to her. If there's anybody that would like to go that direction or if you'd like to proceed and make a decision today without that kind of information or. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna make mention, Mayor, um thank you. I I was um, I was instrumental in implementing with um the Clean Power Alliance in Southern California, their advisory panel, which was made up of uh seven members. And in making that makeup, um kind of similar to the um metros um um South Bay, South Bay um council of of of. Um, Metro's, um, um, South Bay, South Bay, um, Council of, of. Metro Advisory Board, that was also a seven member and it had a lot of elected officials on that board. Um, and it had maybe one community member that was a regular rider on the bus commutes. But, um, I, 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 again, I, 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 I agree on, um, definitely someone. Uh, with the expertise on cannabis and knowledgeable things like this. Um, I agree that we, um, ultimately need to, um, have PD on there. Um, but you have to remember the cannabis, cannabis program is gonna be, um, not only an advisory. Advising the council, but ultimately the council would have, uh, the discretion and would have the, the authority. In which to implement policy. And I say that to say basically, it's important that. All of us do our due diligence when it comes to exactly what a cannabis program is. And I have been making my, my rounds with regards to cities and looking at their policies in. West Hollywood and in Long Beach and following other cities, including, uh, Bellflower. On what their policy is and how it was implemented and how it was instrumental by s- some of their staff. But let's not lose focus here, um. Everybody wants to lead efforts to assure that this cannabis program is a good program and I, and I, and I, I support that. Um, I just want it to be fair and truly fair with regards to. What the advisory board makeup is and I, again, I can't emphasize that. We need to tread lightly when it comes to selection of department heads or departments. On a committee that ultimately is given direction to the council. We already get direction from the council. The council's gonna be making the policy. And we just need to follow those other programs that have worked. And, and it is important to, to see what other cities have done. We can't say that it isn't. We have an idea, but unless you guys are expertise. Uh, I'm not hearing that part of it, so let's make sure we have some, you know, wisdom here. And, um, we're implementing, uh, wisdom and we're following the rule of thumb. Uh, as to what a committee makeup looks like for this first endeavor of cannabis. Uh, here in our city. So let's, let's, let's make sure we're doing that first. Let's, let's make sure we're doing that first. Five member, seven member, I think, um, we're already maybe extending ourselves. I know we have a. Uh, a commission, planning commission, that's five members. I know the city attorney sits there to advise. I know there's a chair. And this is gonna be similar in makeup of what this cannabis committee's gonna look like. There's gonna be a chair member, there's gonna be. A city, a city attorney giving, you know, direction, but, um, let's make sure that we follow the rule of thumb of what, of what a committee looks like. You know, um.
We don't have that.
I, I get, I, yeah, but look at the other committees that we have. We have a planning commission, you know, we have a youth commission. We have a veterans, a veterans commission. I mean, look at those commissions and those formations.
Making point though, the city attorney's involved, but not a voting member of that.
Not a voting member, but you're gonna have him sitting like you, if you're ever, when you're out on the dais, right? There's a five-seat member. You have a city attorney that's ultimately to your left. That's advising, you have the, you know, you have the clerk that's providing the minutes. I mean, it's, 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 it's a. It's a committee that obviously is gonna be, you know, subscribed and have, you know, historic endeavors. So let's make sure we, you know, we get this right. But again, it, it has to be level filled. It has to be women and men.
Okay, so we just need to move on. Are we going to wait till we get like a legal confidential on the other cities? Or are we gonna make a decision today? Okay. I make, I would like to get some information to before we make a decision as whether it's five members or seven. And what a typical makeup from other examples are out there. So that's what I would like to see.
I would, I would like to, uh, propose, uh, that we vote.
No, no, we know that, you and Councilmember Montero, but, um. Mayor Protem and Councilwoman English, just speak up, just, uh, speak up freely, just so that we can move on from this.
Yeah, I would like to wait until we get a legal confidential before we make a decision on this.
Councilmember, uh, English?
I, I don't think it was a legal confidential that we're asking for. I think what we asked for is for similar. Similar, similar advisory boards that were implemented with their cannabis programs in various cities. That's what we're.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a legal confidential. It would be open. Okay, I believe we have support for a legal confidential. Please give us some comprehensive information as to what we're talking about, Mr. City Attorney. Five members, seven member, what the makeups are. Try to give us a good amount of, of, uh. Of ad hoc committees that are out there, good five, six, seven, within our region. Try to be as expansive as possible, please.
And, and, and City Attorney Kim, can you also include, uh, uh, cities that have used their department heads in those committees? And, and or not, okay?
Okay.
Please expedite that, expedite that process. Uh, we wanna make sure that we get, get this in time to be able to make a decision by the next meeting, please.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmembers. Uh, but all your points are well taken, members from the, the school board members, um. I'm kind of, well, yeah, I have my opinions on, we should be into part of that, but, okay. Where are we at?
Number thirty-four.
Yes, item number thirty-four, Councilmember Patterson, you brought forth a potential Fourth of July fireworks show in Hawthorne.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the city manager to report any information that he's, uh, come together, come up with. As far as, uh, putting something like this together. Um, any, any costing, pricing, logistics, is any, any information?
Great, I do have a small update for the, for the elect officials. Uh, staff, you've awaited, uh, potential Fourth of July shows. Uh, potential Fourth of July show in Hawthorne. Uh, we gathered information from five different cities. Uh, that had a range of different prices for their shows. Uh, one thing we found to be consistent that the shows averaged anywhere from eighteen minutes to twenty minutes. And the costing for those shows, uh, ranged from as low as, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars to thirty-three thousand dollars. And that would depend on the, the type of fireworks that you're gonna display and the time of the show. Uh, some of the other cities had additional services included in, in that fireworks show as a festival, carnival games, uh, food. So it just depends on the structure that, the direction that council would like, uh, uh, the city staff to move in. Uh, what I would suggest is, uh, with the direction of council is, uh, to gather additional research on a venue. That was not, um, done yet due to the cost, uh, seeing if that's feasible to move, uh, forward with that kind of cost. And to see if we wanted to move forward with a twenty-twenty-two fireworks show due to COVID, um, not knowing that being unknown. Or to table this event until, uh, we have a resolution to COVID. So, uh, staff is just looking direction on how to move forward with this item.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Patterson, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I think of next year being the hundred-year anniversary centennial of the city of Hawthorne. I would like to move as soon as possible to get everything in place for the centennial. I mean.
When, when is the centennial? What's the day?
Uh, twenty-two, uh, the city was incorporated in, uh, nineteen twenty-two, so it's gonna be.
Uh, what, what day of the, of the year? Do the celebration?
Day was July, I think it was July first.
And if, if I can interject, it's July, um, city staff, city manager's office has put together a committee. Uh, so we will be meeting, uh, soon to dis- uh, discuss potential ideas for the centennial. Uh, so that is on the table for discussion.
Yeah, uh, uh, to the chair, actually, you guys already have voted. We already voted, uh, in twenty nineteen. That we're going to have a Fourth of July parade to celebrate the centennial. Uh, we will do the second, uh, multicultural festival and a Christmas parade on twenty-twenty-two. Those are the, the, those are the event that we already voted on, five votes in twenty nineteen. That we were going to do. So the question is, uh, do we wanna do firework? Uh, show on July, uh, for twenty-twenty-two? Or you should incorporate some small type of firework after the, uh, July. Fourth of July parade to celebrate our centennial.
I like the firework show.
I like, I like fireworks go on Fourth of July.
For next year.
But, but there will be a, a parade sometime in the, in the midday or in the morning and then we can do fireworks show in, at evening.
An all-day event, right?
We could also, um, I appreciate every piece of feedback. But, um, Fourth of July is Fourth of July and the one hundred year centennial of the city of Hawthorne is its own event.
Is July first, Mister Mayor.
No, I know, but it's, but we could either do it on that day, we could do it on a, another day. We could incorporate into July fourth.
Because it's holiday, because holiday, think about it. We wanna do it on a holiday, so you don't wanna do it on a day that is not holiday.
Okay, but I would like to see a standalone event for our centennial where. Can, can you let me finish? Don't, I, I just need you just to come, let people talk and just keep quiet until other.
We voted on twenty nineteen.
Okay, I need you to stop interrupting.
It's on the books.
Okay, I would like to see a standalone event. I'm, I'm putting it out there. Uh, we could have it either around that time or we can have a standalone event. I do have members of the community. People who are members of historical society, people who are, have, uh, left the city of Hawthorne. That wanna come back for something specific like that. Um, so if, uh, we did vote for a Fourth of July parade, great, that's awesome. But, uh, Mister Interim, Interim City Manager, do we have resources to have like some type of celebration where we also have like a dinner? We have a couple of other things that we could do, where like concerts, et cetera, where we bring back some of our, uh. Actors or performers that come out of the city of Hawthorne and perform. Councilwoman English knows something, right? We could ask Russell Westbrook to come back to the city of Hawthorne, et cetera.
Hey, he's down.
Uh, Mister.
July second. July second is a Saturday.
Uh, just to answer your question, Mayor, oh.
And my hand has been up for a long time, Mayor.
You'll be next, you'll be next.
Okay.
Would you like me to answer your questions?
Yeah.
Um, we can look into the budget. I don't have that answer for you right now. I would need to. Uh, listen to all the directives that are being given and price those items out and be able to report at the next meeting. I did wanna share that. Our, uh, cen- centennial year is July twelfth.
Okay, so it's a little bit after. So then the question becomes, in all fairness, discuss it. Is, do we celebrate a centennial on the specific day or can we have it within the month or after? Um, if, if it needs to be celebrated on that day, okay, we're bound by that, right? I mean, that could be a weekday or we could the following week. I mean, feedback from our city councilors, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, ba- based on cost. Um, we, we have, we definitely have to price this out. I like the idea of having fireworks. And I li- I love the idea of having, um, having a standalone event. I have a feeling that it's going to be too costly to do both. So my thinking would be since it's twenty-twenty-two, we have the standalone event in twenty-twenty-two. And defer the fireworks for another, another year. But I really think we should have, we, we, I think we should have. Um, a, uh, I think we should have an event celebrating our centennial and I think it should be standalone. But we, I mean, there are so many things we could do. We could go back to the old days and have a car show. Remember we used to have car shows on Hawthorne Boulevard? That was so, those, that was so cool. We could also have a parade. Um, and, and bring back some of the old feeling of the, um, the traditional celebrations that Hawthorne used to have. So I, I think, I think we should have a standalone event. But, um, I, I think we, we need to, to cost it out and see how much it's going to cost. Because, um, it could be very expensive and if, if we need to, we could probably get some sponsors and raise money.
I'm not, okay, thank you. And I'm not stuck to like what I said, okay, guys? I don't want you guys to misunderstand me. I'm not insisting on it. Practicality rules right here. And, uh, since a Fourth of July parade is awesome. I mean, so, we already voted on it, you're right, we didn't anticipate the centennial. Uh, Fourth of July patriotism, flags all over the place. You know, George Washington, Abraham Lincoln on the floats, et cetera. But the city of Hawthorne's history, we got Marilyn Monroe, the Beach Boys, uh, we have Russell Westbrook, we have all those things, uh. Sony and Cher, Sony Bono that lived here in the city, or Water Tower and all those themes that can be celebrated. And that by separating them from a Fourth of July separation, uh, celebration, doesn't have to be a parade, it could be some other type of, uh. Concert like, uh, setup or something that we celebrate, people come, we spread out, food, et cetera, celebration. We could have it at the memorial center, a standalone event of that nature, not a, a duplicate parade. So we can talk about it later, um, but I'm just putting out there, come back with ideas if we can do it or not. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was just thinking here recently, all the events that we just had, right? We had National Night Out and then we had, uh, End of Summer Barbecue and now we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be having this international festival. I mean, truly, if we could have all of those, I don't understand why we can't have a firework on, on July fourth. It's a fireworks show. I never heard of a parade. I didn't, I didn't hear of anything else other than just a fireworks show. Uh, we definitely, Councilmember Patterson, myself, whoever would like to join. Could, uh, make efforts to raise money to help offset the cost of what this show is gonna be or cost ultimately. And work, uh, with, uh, neighboring schools, either Hawthorne High School or, or, uh, losing our high school. Speak to those powers that be to see how we could maybe, uh, partner together with a fireworks show. And then later on, uh, the hundred anniversary, uh, of Hawthorne. Ultimately could be in around the time in which its actual date was. And, uh, go from there and that one could be a little bit bigger in nature. We've had parades, parades in the past, uh. Christmas parades that we miss dearly. Uh, we had to stop doing that some time ago due to budget, uh, issues. But, um, I'm not going as far as December right now. I'm just staying focused on what items we're addressing right now. Which is the firework, uh, for next year, that would be great. And then, uh, ultimately the hundred-year anniversary, that's all I'm looking at, at this point. And I don't know what had occurred in twenty nineteen. Um, however, new council today, new endeavors, so.
I would like to, I would like to support the fireworks show for next year, for Fourth of July.
Great, we could do some fundraising. You, I, Patterson and whoever wants to do fundraising. I have lots of folks that we could ask for. Assistance with, like we've done for other things and I'm sure they'll be more than happy to help.
Councilwoman Montero?
Well, what, what I was trying to point out to you guys is that. The centennial actually was brought up not by me, but it was for one of our resident, uh. Migo, Gordon Migo.
Of course.
Back then in two thousand, he started, he started in two thousand eighteen. Uh, pushing the city to do something about it. And that is where twenty nineteen, we were still meeting at the dais. When, 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 uh, then, uh, five council voted. It was to do those, those, uh, the Fourth of July parade, uh, uh, festival. And, and the, uh, holiday parade. So, but if you wanna change it, you can go ahead and do it. But what I'm saying is, twenty nineteen was voted. So then if we wanna add the firework show, it's, it's fine with me. But what I'm saying is, you know, we have to be consistent and not be flip-flopping. Uh, because you know, uh, yes, we can do some stuff to stand alone, like you suggest Mister Mayor Dina or, or some other spectacular things. But the same time, you know, what's wrong celebrating the American with Hawthorne? You know, it's, it's a beautiful thing. American independence celebration with Hawthorne, one hundred year centennial. That would be a perfect, perfect foot for the community. But I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna oppose it. You can do whatever, you guys can do whatever you want, uh, because, because you know, like I said, uh, I have. I have my plan, I had my direction from twenty nineteen. That is when we start, uh, talking about. This stuff happened in July and in August or September and in this. Because it was gonna be almost like a six-month celebration of Hawthorne Centennial. It's not gonna be just one day.
Um, okay, no, thank you. Okay, so then, then that's a good point too. Um, it's not just a single day ce- uh, celebration. It could be a multiple day celebration. If there's a way we can incorporate the concept of our centennial with the Fourth of July parade.
It's fine.
We can, if we, if there's a way, um, um, Mister City Manager, you have a committee. Why don't you guys brainstorm that? Um, brainstorm some other things that we could do. A dinner, uh, like a concert or something where we have like. Like I said, who, who's the guy that used to be, uh, our singer from City of Hawthorne? Uh, Chris Montez was, uh, is a singer from the City of Hawthorne.
Beach Boys.
The Beach.
Marilyn Monroe.
Try inviting the Beach Boys, uh, singer, uh. Try inviting the Beach Boys uh singer, uh uh Mister Wilson, but let's see if, you know, how they feel about that. And then you have, you have a historical society that could give some feedback. We can direct it, we're the main guys responsible for it, but we can get some feedback from them. Uh I think you should consult them, see what ideas do they have. I'm seeing questions on the blogs, on Facebook, from the different committees from Hawthorne. What is the city of Hawthorne going to do to commemorate this? That's why I'm, that's why it's at the, you know, um in my head, so. Back in Mister Jerry Miles, he's a, I guess his own ad hoc historian. You know, we have Jerry Miles, who's a a a former resident of City Hawthorne. He posted that back then they had a fifty year medallion that they, that they minted. Um with uh the city of Hawthorne's logo.
I have one, actually.
You do? You know what I'm talking about? So, the, there's a lot of things we can do, I mean, I would like to make it a big thing.
Yeah, but Mister Mayor, all these people that you mentioned actually can be on the parade, we can put all of them, Montez, you know. Uh yeah, uh Sarge from the Galaxy, used to be Galaxy, they can be on all the parade, you know. Aviation, like with aviation, you know, we can nor- the the North Loop and Boeing. Aviation and and uh all cars, you know, it can all be part, and then. And with a big festival, and then fireworks.
Yeah, like and it could be a multi-day, the Fourth of July is Fourth of July. Uh that's our Fourth of July. The the parade does not have to be on the Fourth of July, depending what day it is.
That's what I'm saying, could be on the second, it could be on the nine.
So. Usually it's better to proceed, right, it's gonna be proceed the Fourth of July, so. All right, I think we're.
I have a que- I have another comment.
Go ahead, and it looks like we're in consensus basically, go ahead.
With respect to the um to the centennial, I'm going to suggest that uh to the city manager that he check with some of the other cities. Because we're not the only city that is celebrating its centennial at around this time, some cities around here have already celebrated their centennials. I'd like to uh get some feedback as to what they did. Or um what they're planning to do, those who, the the, I know El Segundo celebrated theirs. And I'd like to get some feedback on what they did, um so to give us some more ideas.
Okay, do you, do you have that noted?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you so much, all right, thank you guys, um we're. I don't know why everybody's over here going, we all kind of agree that at the end, uh it's a great idea, I think we're all excited, so.
Events are us.
So um we have a re- we have to admit that we have a revitalized energy here with this city council mix as to having events for the residents. Um we do have another discussion action item, and we have a closed session. Would the city councils still like to give their reports, or do we, do we pass, do we postpone for the next meeting, or what? I'm just putting that out there, we're, it's already nine o'clock, I'm just putting it out there, any feedback?
I'm good with postponing until the next time.
Anybody else?
Uh no, cause I have to announce something, Mister Mayor.
Okay, then, if we can have brief uh brief comments, uh report, just so for the sake of time, it's later in the evening. Um if we can abbreviate what we have to say, okay, just if you guys be conscious of that. Uh item number thirty five to oppose A B nine eighty nine, A B two one five, Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Yeah, the um, so nine eighty nine did not pass and it's inactive, so I'm going to. Uh table that until next year, uh we'll just be talking about A B two fifteen, planning and zoning. Um this bill will require, would require a local agenty- uh agency. To submit all proposed housing elements or proposed revisions to the housing element to the H C D. Housing and Community Development Department ninety days before adoption. It would also require a local agency to make a first draft of revisions available for public comment. For thirty days, this is the part that people object to, that it would have to, it would have, you would have, it would have to go out for public comment. For thirty days, and if any comments are received, the city would have to take a. Uh ten additional business days to consider and incorporate those public comments. Into the draft revision before submitting it to the H C D. So um it would, it would extend the process significantly. Um if the, if the, if there were any uh suggested uh revisions. Uh and and whatever, whatever, whatever the public comments were, would have to go into the draft revision. And this would go, go to the agency and the agency, I mean, this would go to. The agency would have to incorporate it into its draft and send that to H C D. Um the law also would require that upon submission of the final draft. H C D would have to notify the city if the revisions do not substantially comply. With specified provisions of the planning and zoning law. And if the city still adopted the revisions despite H C D's findings, H C D may uh notify the Attorney General. So um we are, uh I am. I am asking that these, that the council oppose this bill, both the league and the South Bay Cities uh. Council of Governments have opposed this bill.
Uh what say you, do we have support for this?
Uh question.
Go ahead.
City Attorney, uh again, I, did you pro- I I, maybe I missed it, did you provide us pros and cons with regards to the items? In question, and 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 another note, um I really don't understand why, uh you know. Taking public comment uh is very important, getting community support and feedback is very important. Uh eliminating the that um. That process and feeling as if it's an inconvenience to implement. New policy, if new policy is ultimately being implemented due to some of the responses from public. I I don't understand why the league or anybody else would not want a process to assure that there's proper vetting. Of uh questions posed, little own amendments made to uh legislation that would ultimately have the effects longevity. So I don't get what we're trying to do here. Uh by saying what, we don't want public comment, we don't want ten day period time for uh. Public comment to be, you know, ultimately given uh in this instance, probably leverage to implement amendments. I don't get what we're trying to do here.
Mayor Proton, could you give us a, just a uh, what is the reasoning behind the opposition?
Uh the opposition that it, that it, it extends the process, and it's burdensome to the local agencies to have to. Um to, well, they have to, first of all, they have to incorporate the the the, the public comments into the um. Into the draft, this isn't, this is before it goes to H C D, they have to incorporate any any comments into the draft. And um the, they would also have to post any, any revisions online. And email a link to the draft of the, to the draft revision, to individuals and organizations that might have requested notices. Relating to the local agency's housing element. It extent, it's it's burdensome to the local agencies, especially to small ones like ours, who don't really have the staff to do all that. And and then the other thing is, it, it's, it's doing some, uh it's, it's. Uh putting the the city in the position if they, if they do anything, if they adopt the revisions. Despite, if if um, if the revisions do not substantially comply with specified provisions. Of the planning and zoning law. Um the H C D would would have the right to uh notify the Attorney General and might take action against the city. So it it also creates a, an adverse relationship between the H C D and the city.
I have a, I have a piece of feedback, Councilmember English and uh Mayor Proton, and councilmembers. Um Mister City Manager, I mean Mister City Manager, I think Mister City Attorney. Isn't there some, when we're drafting our housing element, isn't there su- sufficient amount of time for? The public to see what we're we're uh going to vote on? The the doc- that's a public document, isn't it not, isn't it available for the public to review? Now, if we were to re- revise our housing element, they would get to see it, right, right now?
Right, they would.
Well, Mister City Attorney, can you respond to that?
You're muted, Robert.
Yeah, Mister City Attorney.
You're muted.
Yes, there is a public comment and public hearing process for housing elements when we're adopting it, but. Um I think they're adding an additional um. Bureaucracy to the process, and that's the criticism that is, that is making the timeline. Uh for adopting housing element longer and more complicated for smaller and rural areas. That's the main criticism, um and that um. It also takes out certain enforcement process involved, but um I think the main. Criticism with these, this is an amendment that they added a thirty day public comment and ten day consideration. That was not in the original bill, and that amendment is, they're saying that it causes e- extra burden on the smaller communities.
I mean, I'm gonna go to my council member colleagues right after this, do you, I mean. In your opinion, does it, could, do you feel that for a city of our size with staffing, even if we had the exact staffing that we needed? Would it just kind of delay the process, cause problems for us? Um kind of undermine our ability as elected council members to make the decision on the housing elements?
Uh let me, let me make a comment to that, uh.
Yeah, go go ahead. You know, I'd like for him to answer that too, go ahead.
What's, what's very important, uh not just for myself, but I would think for leaders such as all of us. Is assuring that we have uh community outreach and public comment abroad. Uh to to simply say that, you know, it would be a a problem for them. Because they have to make all these amendments and changes on um their websites, uh on their books, et cetera. Is 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 BS, I say that to say this. They're making it a scare tactic in which they're saying basically, i- if if we don't do this. Will be dinged for this, uh uh through other efforts on their part. Uh the housing community development is is a large agency, and there's many communities. And everybody should be doing their due diligence to assure that they get abroad and uh. Moreover, large public comment when it comes to any of their housing element. And so by coming back and amending and implementing something at the last hour. Is simply to benefit some, and that's all it is, they're amending it because it's gonna benefit some. And yeah, I believe that's not the way to go, we need to stick to how we normally do our public comment. And which usually it's, it's thirty days, and and it's always been that way, there's always been a. A time limit that allows for vetting, for atta- for allows for broad participation. And all they're doing is uh eliminating that time, and I don't think that's fair, and I can't agree. Uh based off of, you know, uh saying basically that it's gonna be a problem for them, for them.
Okay, I'll go back to those, I'll just respond to that, but uh Councilmember Montero, I think you had your head.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, well. Our process will continue to be our process, the way we do our housing element, okay? In, in the past, the city would do the housing element, the pe- will have period of common. And then it will come to city council, and then we vote around it, and then we, and then we submit it to the, to the. State Department of Housing and Hut, if thou, the state, the State Department of of Housing. Uh impose any changing on us, okay, so this bill. What it's trying to do is to, for for them to be like a watchdog, almost like a a s- another eyes. To our housing element, so they might not accept it, the way we rode into it. Because it might not, it they might, you know, somebody, maybe a developer, for example, would complain to the state, oh, the Hawthorne. Didn't put this and this and this and that. Then the state would come back to us and mandate for us to do this, this and this and that, and if we don't do it. They will refer us with the Attorney General. That is where that I'm inclined to say that I support for us to send a letter to say no on two fifteen. Because it hammed us, the cities, to make decisions on our final housing element. So we do not wanna uh, uh, because remember, the state of California is a big bureaucracy. And only, I you know, you imagine, LA County have eighty eight cities. Just LA County, now imagine San Diego County, San Bernardino County. All those other counties, everybody would have to submit their plan to this ins- to this department for them to review. I don't think that is fair, each city should have their own housing element design.
Process.
And process, and public hearing, and public input, and then we submit the plan, without. Them interfering in our legal process of municipal to decide what our housing element is.
I'm going to respond to you, Councilman Montero, and I just wanna tell you that uh, thank you for highlighting that. Um I mean, you couldn't have said it much better, uh I mean, that's perfect, this is chipping away at our local control. We've had, um for us to be able to dictate uh what we want to see for the city of Hawthorne, because we're the elected officials, everybody here was voted in. Because we have have our ideas on how to, you know, the problems that we have. The need to adjust our housing element accordingly to be able to plan for the future and not exacerbate problems. So, I'll give you guys a big example of why it's, we we should oppose this. If we let the state tell us uh to review our plans. Uh like, the state has reviewed, uh reviewed our. Uh what you call it, our our arena numbers.
Arena numbers, yeah.
You guys know how they, how they treat us with arena numbers, they'll come back and slap us, you need to put more, you need to do this. You need, that's not good, they criticize us and they penalize us, so if we leave it in the hands of the state. You know, it's a big mess, guys, I mean, I just wanna highlight that and maybe clarify some stuff for my, some of the rest of my colleagues. Uh that's the type of situation we will be running into based on what I'm reading right now and hearing, if we. Uh put this out there like that, and then guess what? There's, like, I've always mentioned, there's good developers, there's unscrupulous developers. And if there's some sneaky developers that have experience with this type of crap, they're waiting for this, so they can. Screw up our process in uh dig uh, setting our housing element, trip us up. Get us in trouble, make the correct arguments with the state, they, state comes back and tells us that we have to open up on certain types of uh. Regulations or restrictions, and that's what I'm afraid of, okay, because. The state up there is a big mess, and we've experienced it with green numbers, that's why I would like to support the opposition to this.
The other thing, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to add something else, thank you, to what you said also, it puts us at odds with the state because. If we submit the re- revisions and they don't like the revisions, and they, they oppose it, and we adopt the revisions anyway. They're threatening to be able to refer us to the Attorney General. That's, that's a clear threat, so I, it it, you you're quite right, I think what it's trying to do is to. Control the cities and 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 eliminate their ability to control, ha- have local control.
It's a scare tactic.
Well, and ultimately, I think uh Councilwoman English was saying the same thing we are saying. Except that, you know, a a novo represents that, where we maintain our process and other people can't get their hands on. Our housing element, I mean, I was kind of confused whether yes or no, or what it represented, but. Uh I I believe no, uh sending a letter against this uh A B, whatever the heck it is, two fifteen is the right way to go.
I move to oppose nine eighty uh two fifteen.
Oh, okay, second to Councilwoman Montero, uh roll call vote, please, it'd be great if we could get unanimous.
Councilmember Montero?
I.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
See, the thing I, the thing when these people up there come up with these uh types of uh assembly bills and senate bills. Um I think it's members that come from areas like San Francisco where they don't have the same experiences we do, they're kind of in their little secluded. Gated communities up there, and they just don't venture outside and, you know. Their little brains start working in weird ways, so.
Okay, Mister Mayor, let's move on.
But um. Can we keep our comments from city council members brief so we can go into closed session?
Yeah.
Go ahead, um uh Greg Fallon, City Treasurer?
Hey, guys, everyone and everyone that's listening right now. Um just a quick update on the city, uh you know, treasurer's information, basically, I'm trying to work on my, my first agenda item. Uh to kind of move some money, uh increase our, our long-term investments, which is just one to five-year ladder, you know, fixed instruments. But uh yeah, this, this city needs to have, you know, a nice sizable invested reserves, I'm not just talking about. Uh you know, you know, cash on hand, but kind of, you know, building somewhat of an endowment. You know, like other cities have, you know, a few hundred million dollars would be nice, but you know, shoot for like forty. Uh, so that's something that I'm just, you know, working on. And yes, interest rates are horrible right now and pretty low. But still, it's more about getting the system set up so that the city in the future, you know, has a place to put money to, uh, you know, invest over time. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Mister City Clerk?
All right, uh, just in interest of time, I'm just gonna make two quick comments. Uh, one, I just wanna thank Mister Wang for his presentation. It was apparent how much work they're doing with minimal resources. So I just wanna echo Councilmember Patterson's comments in regards to making the hiring of HR staff a priority, so they have a strong team to appropriately hire the rest of our staff for our departments. I just think it's, it's so important. And then just second, you know, today was a big day in terms of the recall election. Um, results are already starting to come in. Um, thirty-three point four percent of the precincts have come in. As of now, it's a sixty-seven point one, uh, no on the vote. Um, and again, I'm just gonna leave it at that, cuz it's been a long night. But thank you for everyone's, uh, comments and discussion.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, yeah, again, I'm gonna echo, uh, thank you, uh, Mister Peter Yang for the Building and Safety for his presentation. Uh, that was, uh, like Ms. Valentine was very illuminated, so we need to, uh, you know, give him some help in there. Um, thank you, the, uh, the ladies from the foundation, you know, the college foundation to come because they know scholarships is hard to get, so that's a very good, so I appreciate that they're coming. Before I talk about the warfests, I wanted to say happy birthday to Ms. Valentine and Mister Mayor because this is your September month's birthday, so happy birthday to all of you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, so on Saturday, uh, we're gonna have the first, uh, Hawthorne Festival, you know, multicultural festival, right? Uh, it's called the Hawthorne Warfest. Saturday from ten AM to six PM, okay, at the Hawthorne Memorial Park. Uh, so you guys are all invited. Uh, you're gonna have VIP parking, you know, in the front of Memorial Center. Uh, and at ten o'clock, I'm gonna open, you know, welcome everyone and we're gonna, you know, be the, uh, Selena Akun and I will be the, the, the beginning and the MC for the, for the event. Um, so if you wanna show up to be on the stage at ten AM, you're welcome, right? Uh, and then, you know, you can have a chance to say something or, uh, around twelve thirty PM, okay? Uh, that Holly Mitchell is gonna be there. Uh, and you could, guys can have, uh, at least the mic for one, one minute each to say hello to the people, okay? So it's up to you. By, by, by the ten o'clock, we're gonna do National Anthem, American the Beautiful. And then it's gonna start a stream of, uh, of events, like, like live music. So we go, we have five different bands coming, you know, from, like I said, Latin jazz, uh, Cuban, uh, bossa nova, mariachi, hip-hop, you know, so a lot of good stuff. And we're gonna have a lot of food trucks. We're gonna have a beer and wine garden. We're gonna have ATM machines on the park. Uh, thirty different other vendors, you know, so, so just, uh, it's gonna be a fun day, okay? So, so, uh, basically, guys, you have got all these flyer, right? And if you go to the city website, cityofhawthorne.org, if you click on the warfest, it has all the, 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 the event schedule that, you know, showed you at ten o'clock what's gonna happen until six PM. Uh, and it have all the other booths that we're gonna have, so, uh, you, uh, like I said, all of you are welcome and it's gonna be fun day. Uh, believe it or not, you know, uh, we, we have an ad on Facebook that has got almost six thousand hits. So, huh, so we're gonna expect a, a very good turnout and fun day. So six, um, September eighteen from ten to six PM, all right? I hope to see all of you there. That's it, Mister Mayor. Good night.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, Councilwoman Angie Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too want to, uh, thank Mister, um, Kim for your presentation this evening along with, uh, police and, and finance for your presentation, uh, to the College Expo. Uh, women that have been working hard for both, uh, Black and Latino College, uh, Foundation. Thank you for, um, your, um, your leadership. It, it, it's, it's obviously, um, quite rewarding to know that many have benefit from, have benefited from it. Um, I wanna thank, uh, the Drive Nation that I partnered with, uh, this past weekend. Um, thank you to those that gave and provided so that we could buy five hundred backpacks and a little more over that, uh, supplies and whatnot, and we added those to the backpacks. Uh, the kids that participated are, uh, basketball, uh, training. And, uh, they had fun, um, packing those bags and distributing those bags to the community. And we're also giving some, some to some, uh, nonprofit organizations here in Hawthorne. So thank you for that. Um, uh, there was one other thing, uh, we, I might, I might have missed it. I know I missed, uh, the end of, uh, end of, uh, summer barbecue. But let me just thank, um, Vaughn and staff that did the, uh, employer appreciation that we had here at City Hall. Thank you for that. Uh, I think the employees, thank you for that. And, uh, it was, it was good to see, um, our employees engaged and enjoying themselves, um, by sitting down and eating a meal with their fellow, uh, comrades. So thank you all for doing that. Um, I want to, uh, ask for a directive in, in providing a, uh, what I would call a rapid response team to address the dumping here in our city once and for all. It's an effort that I think is gonna take more than just one or two people, uh, one day, two days. It's gonna be efforts, you know, anywhere between four to five days, maybe five people. Uh, that are gonna be ultimately responsible for ensuring that our city is, uh, clean from any dumping. And then, oh, moreover, we need a, uh, PR, public, uh, public, uh, announcement efforts to advise the community, especially apartment complex of calling in and dedicating a line exclusive to residents to call and, and ask for their items to be picked up or removed. I think, uh, if there's a fast response time with regards to having those items picked up and having, uh, someone here at City Hall working on that, uh, those calls being made with a dedicated line, um, I think would surely prove, uh, good efforts. And, and that's ultimately something I wanna see. So you could please include that and, um, bring that back. Um, but other than that, Mayor, I think we had a good discussion tonight. And, um, it's quite, um, exciting to, to see the involvement with regards to cannabis. Um, it's, it's a learning curve for all of us. We don't know everything, but I think it's important that we individually do our research and make efforts to visit and know what it is that we're talking about when it comes to what it is that we want our program to look like. So make sure that you're visiting, make sure that you're going out and you're getting that information. And that you are, um, you know, understanding fully the difference of what types of licensing and what types of, uh, product and what types of, uh, community benefits and what types of, uh, uh, how this program is gonna ultimately benefit many. So I look forward to talking more about the committee and how that's gonna be formed. And, um, I wanna thank, um, everyone here tonight, the good discussion. Nothing, nothing, uh, negative about it. Good discussion. Happy birthday, Mayor. Happy birthday, Councilmember Valentine to all of our birthday babies, uh, here in City Hall, our workforce. Uh, thank you again for the work that you're doing. I see you and I hear you, and I do make my rounds and I drive in the community. I saw the markings this morning along Broadway implementing the, the, the parking stalls. I appreciate that. It looks at folks that are staying in their lane, if you will, and parked in those stalls. So I like that. And I like that we're using discretion and how we could implement, implement that across the city. And moreover, I look to entertain, uh, more on how maybe we need to take back some of our perferential districts, uh, permitted parking. So again, look forward to all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Wanna first thank the community for, for watching it today. I wanna thank staff for all the hard work that you do. So a few points I wanna touch on, really surrounding our finances. Uh, I know the, the city treasurer said he is working on, uh, an agenda item. But I would like to make sure that we are getting our quarterly investment, uh, and financial presentations right from our city treasurer. I'd like to ask that, um, so our finance director provides with some type of cash management policy and present that to the council. Uh, as well as specifically how we're managing this fifteen million dollars that's coming in that we're gonna be spending, but it's still, uh, a large lump sum of money that's not gonna be spent right away. And, and how that, that cash is gonna be managed as well. Um, uh, earlier in the year, in the budget process, uh, it became aware, I became aware that our, our, there needs to be some updates to how our money is reported in our budget, specifically in terms of our, our city attorney's, uh, fees. Um, specifically, you know, one of the things that came up was w- w- we're doing a cost allocation to a, a lot of departments based upon some twenty-year-old math that needs to be updated. Um, you know, city attorneys outsourcing isn't showing up in the city attorney's budget. And so I wanna see that corrected. Uh, I wanna get some of a report on, um, what, what we've done to, to move that forward, to make sure that, that expenses are properly being allocated to the right account and reported in a much more, uh, clearer way. And, uh, I would like to follow, let somebody follow with me on really the results of, of looking into, uh, the last five years of expenditures in the city attorney's, uh, office. I know, you know, we're still not clear about how those monies have been spent historically. Wanna make sure that we're really clear about what's happened in the past so we can, you know, hold, um, the new office holder to, to the proper standard. Um, and that's it. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Mayor Proton Valentine, I think we covered, uh, everyone, right, so far? Councilmember Montero, did we cover you?
I have a backup.
Okay, yeah, of course. Let's do the backup. Let's do the backup before we go on to Mayor Proton. To backup.
Actually, I di- I just, I, I forgot to mention about that, uh, uh, actually, Ms. Valentine and I a- attend the Sentinel Valley Union School District, uh, Community Breakfast, uh, where they, you know, all the academies, uh, will pre- present themselves, you know, the kids, the high school kids. You know, represent all these, those academy was a very good, uh, uh, attendee today, this morning. So it was a very good breakfast. And we thank Sentinel Valley for inviting us. And also, I just wanted to say congratulations to Vaughn Norris and his team, the negotiation again, uh, to get the contract for the, uh, HMEA done, uh, for the three years. So, uh, uh, a good, good work on that. So thank you for the, and municipal employees and, uh, intercity manage and, uh, and the, and the negotiation team for done outstanding job on the negotiation. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Proton?
Actually, I have a quick go back to.
You too? Oh, my God, there is like, okay, it's, it's addictive. Okay, go ahead.
I know it is. I apologize. Last week, I attended the, uh, Government Investment Officers Association Annual Conference in Vegas. Um, in my role at City of Carson, but I saw that there was nobody from the city of Hawthorne there, which I think is a mistake. Uh, I think that we need to make sure we're participating in a proper continuing education to make sure that we are handling our finances properly. There was a couple of things that were, uh, discussed. Uh, I think that, that really applies to our city one, which is updating our investment policy. Our investment policy, which has been up, updated since I wrote it a number of years ago. Um, and, and, um, and as, as well as accounting practices. So I, I would like to ask the city manager to make sure that our, our finance staff and our treasurers pursuing, is represented at the appropriate community education conferences.
Okay.
Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to Councilman Patterson for coming out to the, uh, backpack giveaway.
Awesome. Okay, now we're, we'll, we'll move on to Mayor Proton. Go ahead, man.
All right, thank you. Uh, yes, as Councilmember Montero said, um, this morning, I had the pleasure of attending the Community Partner Breakfast and Expo given by Sentinel Valley High School in partnership with the South Bay WIB. The purpose of that, uh, event is to introduce its twelve academies to the community and local businesses. These academies develop specific skills which are in high demand in today's industry. Some of the ac- academies they introduced were criminal justice, engineering, environmental careers, and biomedical careers. Um, our own Chief Ishi actually spoke to inspire the students to take advantage of the opportunities being given by that boy, by those career academies. A very, very inspiring talk. Thank you, Chief Ishi. Um, but, uh, it's, 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 it's an amazing program. They give this program every year. The twelve academies, they, they, they work hard to, to, uh, to train the students in specific areas so that they can actually go out to the businesses when they, when they graduate. They can actually, they can actually serve as interns in different, uh, businesses. And then when they graduate, they, they are prepared skill-wise to, uh, to be employees in those industries. So it's, it's really, um, an, an amazing program which deserves a lot of credit. Um, I wanna thank the Public Works Department for the Saturday, last Saturday's hazardous waste and e-waste collection event. It took place last Saturday from nine to three. Many Hawthorne residents took advantage of this collection. Um, and LA County Sanitation District hauled off hazardous waste materials um, to ensure appropriate storage and treatment to better protect the environment. So thanks to Public Works and its, uh, par- in it, and in, in its partnership with LA County Sanitation District. Um, as you are aware, the city received funding from the American Rescue Plan Act to assist with COVID relief. The city will use part of its funding to help its small businesses. However, we need to hear from you, the businesses, as to what your needs are. I'm going to introduce our city manager to explain the, the scope of the program and what we're asking you as businesses to do. Uh, Mister City Manager, could you just briefly, um, explain what this survey is about?
Absolutely. Good evening again. So the city is inviting businesses to participate in a survey to gain, uh, perspective on the business owner's impact by COVID nineteen, uh, and assist what needs are, needs are needed to recover. Uh, the city wants to allocate, as you know, from this evening, a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funding to award the, to award those businesses to restore their business back to normal. So the questionnaire that we're gonna send out to roughly about fifteen hundred business, uh, stakeholders in our city takes about five minutes to complete, um, and their answers will be strictly confidential. So we'll have that information up on our, our website and we're in the process of getting that information out to our businesses.
Yeah, so I wanna urge you, uh, the businesses, please answer the survey, please send it back in because we can't help you if we don't have information from you. So when you get that survey, send it in right away. Um, I wanna, I wanna say thank you to Mister Kim for his, um, really extensive report on fa- parking fees, which is really helpful to us. Um, I wanna thank Peter Wang for his report on, um, uh, building and safety and, um, the scope of their problem and what their needs are. So, so I wanna thank both that, both those staff members. And, um, that's basically all I have. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you so much. Councilmember Patterson, you have another go back, man? That, that hands up. Oh, uh, coun- Councilwoman English, you have something real quick?
Yes, thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Eric Chavez and the whole team, Channel Twenty-two for the memorial that we did on the twenty anniversary of nine eleven. Thank you for that, um, that inspiration, that video that you provided, uh, us. It was, uh, greatly appreciated and the opportunity to say a few words, um, to commemorate the, uh, twentieth anniversary and also to your team for coming out and covering, uh, the backpack giveaway. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. All right, wanna appreciate everybody for, uh, congratulations to all my council colleagues on attending some of these, uh, events, some of these formal functions, the backpack giveaway, a couple of other things you guys did here. Um, I wanna mention the North Hawthorne, um, Community Association's Ice Cream Social. They had an ice cream social which was well-attended. Uh, different groups around the city contributed to the, to the ice cream that was distributed amongst the community. So they had a great turnout. So everybody sat, was happy at that event. Um, and it's starting, it's gonna start cooling up in a little bit, so, um, let's enjoy our ice cream right now when it's kind of a little bit warm. Um, temperatures are going up, so try to stay cool. Uh, they're gonna go down, but right now we have, we've had some heat surges, so let's just be careful with that. Um, I have, I don't have much more to say, but I just wanna appreciate everybody, uh, for the birthday wishes. My councilmember colleagues, uh, community members, staff who has also extended their birthday wishes. Fifty, uh, I turned fifty, um, as I was telling one of my councilmember colleagues, it's, uh, I don't know, I, I embrace it, not that I'm. I don't know, I I embrace it. Not that I embrace it, I'm happy I'm here. Sometimes you don't get to see. That far ahead and don't envision yourself at a point in life. But I'm very blessed that I was given the opportunity to uh by the good Lord. To reach fifty, and I know that there's many more years to come of uh great stuff. It only gets better after this, is the way we look at it. Congratulations to my councilmember colleague, uh Mayor Pro Tem Valentine as well for her birthday. So. Thank you, everybody. I don't think we have any go backs. If we had go backs at this point, I mean like, man, you guys are crazy. It's nine thirty, so we do have a closed session. That just a moment.
May I have two minutes, mayor?
No, yeah, well, sure, absolutely. Two minutes, uh we wanna get through that. Interim city attorney, uh would you please read each item into the record for our closed session, please?
Yes, Mister Mayor, uh in the closed session is a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. There are. Pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine subsection D subsection one. There are three matters. Uh first is what we have outside counsel waiting. Uh it's on Palmer versus City of Hawthorne, L A Superior Court case number twenty S T. C V four eight two two one. Then the other two matters are actually two case, separate cases on. M and A Gabe versus City of Hawthorne, L A Superior Court case number twenty S T C P zero two six five two. And L A Superior Court case number twenty S T L C zero nine one six zero. Um we're, we should take the first matter, Palmer versus City of Hawthorne separately, as we have outside counsel for exclusively for that matter.
Okay, so. So which one are we going to do separate? Just A?
Yes, the, let's just do A first, and then uh once the outside counsel leaves after giving the report on that. Then we can take up B and C in in closed session.
Okay, so we can, we don't have to transition back? We can just shift over, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just just for clarification, if anybody's out there watching, everything's approved and falls under the guidelines. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the thirty uh thirty seven?
No, we didn't receive any comments.
Okay, seeing none, if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed order. Um two minutes, guys. Uh we will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session. For a conference pursuant to the agenda at nine thirty-two. We're in recess.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, "What should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?"
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people.
Two, arm length.
Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub it while you sing the song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash. Rub your hands and fingers and the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands okay. Wash your hands. Reach out, you're almost done. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, president of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The Organics Law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons...
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm planks. Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub them while you sing this song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash. Rub your hands and fingers and the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands so clean. Wash your hands. Reach up, you almost done. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling and enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
To order at 10:28. We have met in a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda, listed as Item 37. And interim city attorney, what can you tell us?
City Council was given status and updates with a report and guidance as to three matters: Palmer versus City of Hawthorne, and two matters involving M&amp;A Cabaye versus City of Hawthorne. And there were no reportable action.
Okay, if there's nothing further from my city councilmember colleagues, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:28. Thank you.